Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, we are back. Okay, and we are next up is calendar number three fifty seven dash twenty two dash S. This is two twenty two to two twenty four South Halsted. If you are here in support or objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. See here, I can see we've got Counselor Butler, we've got George Kissel. Got Odysseus Metropolis. And Dan Farrell. Okay, I think we have everybody. Counselor Butler, I'm gonna get your witnesses sworn and then you can proceed. Let's. Wait, do we have Chris? Boat to Pulos?
We should only have Odie Metropolis, Ed Farrell, and George Kissel are the witnesses that should be on.
Okay, great, and we do have them. Let's start with. Odie, Odie Metropolis. Could you say your name and address, please?
Odysseus Metropolis, two ten North Addison Avenue, Almhurst, Illinois, six zero one two six.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And then Ed Farrell, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Ed Farrell. My work address is thirty six oh one Algonquin Road, Rolling Meadows, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. George Kissel, can you state your name and address, please?
Certainly. My name is George Kissel. Business address one forty one West Jackson Boulevard in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, and we recognize your expertise based on many past performances or appearances here.
Thank you.
And I also, I need to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. This is the recommendation for three fifty seven dash twenty two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the expansion of an existing adult-use cannabis dispensary to the basement of the existing building, provided: One, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, the Herbal Care Center, Inc. Two, all onsite customer queuing occurs within the building. Three, the expansion is consistent with the design and layout of the basement and first-floor security plans dated October sixteen twenty twenty-two, prepared by SMG Security. And four, the elevations and site remain consistent with the previously approved plans dated November eighteen twenty twenty, prepared by Studio ARQ. Okay, Counselor Butler, you do not have, there's no objectors here. Again, if anybody is here in support or objection, please raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. But I'm not seeing any Counselor Butler, so you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Liz Butler. I'm a partner at the law firm of Taft, Statinius, and Hollister, located at one eleven East Whacker Drive, Suite twenty-six hundred in Chicago. I represent the applicant in this matter, the Herbal Care Center, Inc. And we've sworn in our witnesses, but I'll introduce them again. I'm joined today by the following representatives of the applicant. Odie Metropolis, who is the retail area director for the applicant. Ed Farrell is the managing partner of Silver Star Protection Group, who is the security contractor for the applicant. And George Kissel is our land use planner. He is the president of Okrenkissel Associates. I will keep my presentation very brief in light of where we are in the afternoon, but let me just say that this is a special use for an expansion of an existing cannabis dispensary. This is a facility that operates at two twenty-two South Halsted. It is licensed by the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. It received its initial special use approval from the ZBA in November twenty twenty, and it received its certificate of occupancy from the city of Chicago on May third, twenty twenty-one. The property is on the west side of Halsted between Adams and Jackson. It's improved with a three-story commercial building. The facility currently operates in the ground floor, the first floor of the existing building. And this request for a special use is to allow an expansion into the basement of the existing building to store cannabis products in a four hundred and twenty-three-square-foot basement vault space. Importantly, this basement vault space was always part of the plan for this facility. There was testimony at the initial ZBA hearing that there would be a ground basement vault space, but there were conflicting indications on the plans. So we're coming back to correct that and to authorize this special use expansion into the basement. So as detailed in the findings of fact that were submitted in advance of this hearing, the request for this special use meets all of the special use approval criteria. The applicant met with Alderman Burnett throughout the initial zoning approval process and throughout this year. And of equal importance for this process, the applicant also held a community meeting in July of twenty twenty-two. The notice of that meeting was sent out to neighbors and was published. We filed that affidavit of the community meeting with the findings of fact. As counsel for the applicant, I am not aware of any objections to the proposed use or the proposed expansion. So with that, I will turn to my witnesses and get them to confirm their testimony and affidavits for the record.
Yes, thank you. As you've been talking, no objectors have raised their hands, so this is unapologetic.
So I will first turn to Mr. Metropolis. Could you please again state your name, title, and business address for the record?
Oh, this is Metropolis, State Director for the company. And two ten North Addison Avenue, Almhurst, Illinois, six one two six, my address.
Thank you. And as the retail director for Verano Holdings, you have specific knowledge regarding the proposed plans, the improvements, the operations of the existing facility and the proposed expansion area, right?
Correct, I do.
And you're aware that as counsel for the applicant, I submitted the proposed findings of fact, which included an affidavit setting forth your testimony, and that was signed by you. Is that right?
That's right.
And if you were to continue to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with the proposed findings of fact in that affidavit. Is that right?
That is right.
Thank you. I will turn to our next witness, Mr. Farrell. Could you please state your name, address, and your business or profession for the record?
Yes, my name is Ed Farrell. My address is thirty-six oh one Algonquin Road, Rolling Meadows, Illinois. My profession is I'm the owner of a third-party security company and a licensed Illinois security and alarm contractor.
And that's Silver Star Protection, right?
That is correct.
And Silver Star provides security services for the existing facility, right?
That is correct.
And you're aware that as the applicant's counsel, I submitted to the board in advance of this hearing the proposed findings of fact, which included an affidavit that set forth your testimony, and that was signed by you, right?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify today, your testimony, which would relate to the applicant's robust security plan, your testimony would be consistent with that affidavit. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. I will now turn to our final witness, Mr. Kissel. Could you please state your name, address, and your business or profession?
Certainly. My name is George Kissel. I'm the president of Okrenkissel Associates with offices at one forty-one West Jackson in Chicago. I'm a licensed architect and certified planner with over forty years of experience in the field of planning and zoning.
And the board has already recognized your expertise in that regard. Thank you. And you were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of this proposed expansion of an existing cannabis dispensary, right?
That is correct.
And you prepared a report that detailed your analysis, findings, conclusions, right?
That is correct.
And you're aware that that report was submitted to the board as part of the proposed findings of fact, right?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify today, Mr. Kissel, would your testimony be consistent with the findings of fact and the findings and conclusions that were contained in your report?
Yes, it would.
And specifically that the proposed development and the proposed expansion is consistent with the criteria for approval of special uses and the specific criteria for approval of an adult cannabis use, adult-use cannabis dispensary, is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions for our witnesses. And that really concludes our presentation. Our team is available to answer any questions that the board might have. Again, we're aware of no objections or issues or concerns with the addition of the basement vault space, and we respectfully request your favorable consideration of this matter.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just one question, Chair. Ms. Butler, could you explain the notice that was provided at the community meeting that you referenced?
The notice was published in the Sun Times, and it was mailed out to property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. Thank you. I'm sorry, we also provided notice as required to the zoning administrator and to the aldermen for the board.
Thank you.
And any other questions from the board?
Yeah, this was just Commissioner Toya. You do that, I mean, don't we do that always? You didn't do above and beyond what you were supposed to do, reaching out to people, right? That's what you're supposed to do when you're applying for a special use, right?
We met the requirements for the community meeting notice requirements for cannabis dispensary uses, yes.
Right, but you didn't go above and beyond. You didn't reach out to the business association or the neighborhood group on your own, did you? You just did what the guidelines said.
We did what the guidelines asked.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I think we have what we need. We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is calendar number three fifty-eight dash twenty-two dash S. This is thirty-four oh one to thirty-four thirty-five North Cicero. If you are here in support or objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Ms. Rosa Perez, are you here in support or objection?
Objection.
Okay, okay, great. We will, we will get to you. The way this is going to work is the applicant will put on their case in chief. And then we will turn to you to state your objection on the record. You can also ask questions of the applicant at that time. And then we will go back to the applicant for rebuttal and closing, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Let me see here. Counselor Degnan, I'm going to go ahead and get your witnesses sworn.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle Cossey Drake, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Michelle Cossey Drake, and I am located at sixty-six East Randolph, Chicago, six oh six oh one.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Mark Perucci, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Mark Perucci. I'm with Eckenhoff Sanders Architects. Office's address is one thirty East Randolph Street, Suite eighteen fifty, Chicago, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Mr. Terrence O'Brien has already been sworn and his expertise has been recognized.
Thank you.
So Counselor Degnan, since we do have an objector here, please do go through your full case. And then we'll turn it over to the objector, and the board may ask questions at any time, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Amy Degnan, and I'm an attorney with George's and Sino Wiki. I'm appearing for the applicant after school matters. This application is for a special use for the expansion of an existing community center, which was granted by the zoning board of appeals back in August of twenty sixteen at thirty-four thirty-five North Cicero Avenue. The property is Zone C two one, which requires a special use for a community center. Present with me, as you've already sworn in, is Michelle Cossey Drake, the general counsel for After School Matters, the project architect Mark Perucci of Eckenhoff Sanders Architects, and our appraiser Terrence O'Brien, who is prepared to report and is available to testify as an expert in the field of real estate appraisal. As you're all likely aware, After School Matter provides Chicago teens with opportunities to explore their passions and develop their talent through free, world-class after-school and summer programming across Chicago. After School Matters is a non-for-profit organization that has served over two hundred and fifty thousand teenagers in Chicago for the last thirty-one years. After School Matters began in nineteen ninety-one with two hundred and sixty teens apprenticed and professionals artist. Teens report that After School Matters helped them express themselves, made them better communicators, and introduced them to new career opportunities. After School Matters has received national and international recognition for the scope and quality of its programs and the impact on teens. The subject property is in Chicago's Belmont-Cragin neighborhood on the east side of Cicero Avenue, north of Roscoe Street. The property includes a renovated thirty-six thousand-square-foot building and a one-story, two thousand two hundred and forty-square-foot garage and an adjacent parking lot with thirty-eight parking spaces. After School Matters has been operating this community center at this location since twenty sixteen, and they would like to renovate the existing one-story, two thousand two hundred and forty-square-foot garage to expand the community center into the garage and use that area for continued programming. This property is in the thirtieth ward, and the applicant has the support of Alderman Ravoyras. With that, if you have any questions for me, otherwise I'd like to call my first witness.
Go ahead and call your witnesses.
Okay, thanks. So Michelle Cossey Drake, can you please state your name and spell your last name and please give your business address?
Yes, my name is Michelle Cossey Drake. It's spelled C as in cat, A U S E Y hyphen Drake, D as in dog, R A K E. I am the general counsel for After School Matters, and our office address is sixty-six East Randolph in Chicago at six zero six zero one.
Excellent. And you're familiar with the subject property at thirty-four thirty-five North Cicero, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And is everything that I just described about the scope of the proposed use correct?
Yes.
And you were kind enough to submit an affidavit in support of the application that was submitted with our proposed finding of fact. If called to testify further, would you testify in accordance with that affidavit?
Yes, I would.
And if the special uses are approved?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Degnan, I just want to point out here that we really do need anything that is in her affidavit, if you want to get it on the record, you really need to get it out because Ms. Perez here, who's here in objection, needs to be able to hear it.
Okay. As you mentioned, you're the general counsel for After School Matters, and you're familiar with the existing property.
Yes, I am.
And the building design is in compliance and will meet all the applicable standards of the building and zoning code, is that correct?
Yes.
And you've reviewed the application of the special use filed in this case and related application for this site related to the approval for a special use, and you agree with all of those statements, is that correct?
Yes.
Based on granting this special use, the applicant operations site will comply with all applicable standards of the zoning code, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and if the special use is approved, you will comply with all municipal code, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I'm ready for my next witness.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mark Perucci, can you please state your name and spell your last name?
Sure, it's, first name is Mark, last name is T as in Peter, A R R U C C I.
Okay, and you're an architect with the firm Eckenhoff Sanders, is that correct?
That's right.
And you're familiar with the subject property and the proposed development, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And this site is designed to comply with city landscape requirements, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Is the site designed to avoid any adverse impact on the neighborhood and/or surrounding uses, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you have any professional opinion whether the project design is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning and project design?
Yes, I do believe it's compatible.
And do you have a professional opinion whether the project is compatible with the character of the surrounding area?
Yes, I believe it's compatible.
And do you have a professional opinion whether the project is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes, it is.
And is everything I said about the scope of the project correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, I'm ready for my next witness.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Terrence O'Brien?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you please state your name and spell your last name?
Terrence O'Brien, O, L, P, C, F, I, N, professional real estate appraiser.
Okay. And you're a licensed real estate appraiser. That was in your resume. That information is all accurate, is that correct?
That is correct.
And Mr. O'Brien has been recognized by the board as an expert?
Yes, he has.
Great. Mr. O'Brien, are you familiar with the property and the surrounding area of the application?
Yes, my familiarity deals with, back in two thousand and sixty, I testified on behalf of the applicant for the original development for the community center. At that time, I made inspections of the subject and surrounding area. Then subsequent to that, in September, I re-inspected the subject site and surrounding area to see what changes, if any, have occurred. And I'm now very familiar with land uses in the subject area, the current use of the subject, et cetera.
Great. And is everything I described about the scope in your mind correct?
Yes, I don't think maybe needs to be brought out is the existing five-bay garage is currently not being utilized. But when it is redeveloped or re-renovated, there'll also be a seven hundred square-foot greenhouse. And I'm not sure that was mentioned in the original description, and that would be located on the garage's north elevation.
Thank you. And do you have a professional opinion on whether the request to expand the existing community center for After School Matters is in the interest of the public convenience?
In my opinion, it's definitely in the interest of public convenience. It provides a necessary service. Among the services that they provide include school programs for teens, including music, dance, theater, urban gardening, welding, bicycle repairs, and STEM educational disciplines. These are all very important and valuable educational needs, and the success of the past operations of this facility show that there is definite need for this type of product at this specific location.
Thank you. And do you have a professional opinion whether the project will have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community?
I do, and in my opinion, it would be harmonious and compatible with other land uses in the area. Again, this has been in existence, other than the the community center's been in existence since two thousand and sixteen. I would also note that the subject property and the majority of property in immediate vicinity along Cicero Avenue is Zone C two one, which is a motor vehicle-related type district, where you have many used car lots, auto repair shops, et cetera, in the area. Also, as far as an institutional standpoint, just located north of the subject is a church as well as a school that's institutional in nature, which is somewhat compatible with the proposed expansion of the subject property.
Excellent, thank you. Do you have a professional opinion whether the project is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning and building scale and project design?
Yes, the expansion is a single-story structure. There's many structures in the surrounding area, including a portion of the subject at the north end of the lot, which is a stanchy higher three stories, and then there's many in the surrounding residential area. There's several structures that are two and three stories in height. And as far as the floor area ratio goes, it's not significant at all. It's far underdeveloped, the subject area, really, in the subject site.
Okay. And do you have a professional opinion whether the project is compatible with the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics such as hours of operation, outdoor lighting, noise, and traffic generation?
Yes, there'll be minimal traffic generation, and I would point out, located on the subject site are approximately thirty-eight parking spaces, which is far in excess of what is required or needed for this operation. As far as the access, they would be provided off of Cicero Avenue, so you're not going to have any circulation, traffic circulation that this development may generate, they won't be circulating in the surrounding residential areas.
Thank you. And do you have a professional opinion whether the project is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
In my opinion, it will have no adverse impact upon pedestrian safety and comfort. There's two existing driveway or curb cuts along Cicero Avenue, which will be continued to be used. I would also point out that this structure, the single-story structure where the expansion's going, used to be a five-bay garage, and there was a curb cut to provide access to the garage off of the street to the south, and that I don't believe will be used any longer, given the circumstances that what this development's going to be consistent or consistent.
Thank you. And then do you have an opinion whether the proposed community center will cause substantial injury to the value of the property in the neighborhood in which it's located?
In my opinion, it'll have no adverse impact. In fact, the redevelopment of this garage will actually remove an eyesore. I think it would be beneficial to the area as a whole.
Great. And thank you again for all of your detailed question. Is there anything else you'd like to add, given your review of the property in twenty sixteen and then review again most recently for this case?
I just believe it fulfills a need. It's a worthy development, and the success of it in the past shows that there's a definite need in the expansion for these types of facilities, such as STEM educational disciplines is very important. And I think it'll be a benefit to the community as a whole.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we've concluded with our witnesses, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before, I'm gonna ask if the board has any questions before we get to the objector, but one thing that I need to do that I forgot to do is read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. So I'm gonna do that now. This is the recommendation. This is the recommendation for 358 dash 22 dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the expansion of an existing community center use into an existing garage structure, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, After School Matters Inc. Two, the expansion is consistent with the design and layout of the site landscape plan, overall site dated August 8, 2016. Plant list in details, overall site dated August 3, 2016. An architectural site plan garage area, first floor and demo plans garage only, and exterior elevations garage only dated October 29, 2021. All prepared by Eckenhoff Sunder's Architects. And three, principal building floor plans and elevations remain consistent with first floor plan dated June 3, 2016. The second through fourth floor plans dated June 27, 2016, and the elevations dated June 24, 2016. All prepared by Eckenhoff Sunder's Architects. Okay, having heard the applicant's case in chief, any questions from the board at this time before we move to the objector? I've got one, one question, what is the garage currently being used for?
It's currently just, I'm gonna start, Michelle, do you want to answer that question?
Yes, currently the garage is used for, like, we have stored some items, boxes, things of that sort for teens that are stored in there. And that's primarily it. There was a point when we had COVID situations where we passed out some meals to our teens from the garage, but primarily those were the only two uses.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's not actually using any parking, the, the 32 parking spots that Mr. O'Brien referenced earlier, those are, that's separate from the garage, is that correct? Oh, 38, sorry.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's separate.
Okay, okay, that's the question I had. Let's go to Ms. Perez. Ms. Perez, you've, you've heard the applicant's case in chief, you now, oh, you know what, first, before you say anything, let me get your name and address so I can swear you in.
My name is Rosa Perez, and I live at 4754 West Rosco, 60641.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I swear.
Thank you. It's your opportunity now to state your objection, and if you have any questions of the applicant or any of the witnesses of the applicant, you can ask them now as well.
Okay, yes, it's the same objection I had in 2016. And it's because of the parking, they are taking the parkings on Rosco Street. Everybody's just parking along the whole side of Rosco, waiting for the kids to come out. They take my handicap parking, that's right there in front of the house at 4754. I called police to come and ticket them. Police, there's no surveillance of police on the street. And it's very traffic, a lot of traffic on the street. We have two way, there's hardly no parkings, and there's, on top of that, it's very narrow the street. So I cannot even get in my car or get out of my car, because I have all this rows of cars standing there. Okay, they crashed my car about three weeks ago, it's still in the shop. It was somebody picking up somebody from after school matters, they went in the garage and they backed out, and then they hit my car. So I'm scared for my life over here, getting in and out of the car. And there's too much traffic, nobody gives them ticket, there is no police supervision over here. And they say that they park over there, no they don't, they parking on this street. They're parking in that garage too, that they're talking about, that's where the, the parents are parking right there. And then they back out, they hit my car, they have also broken that fence on the alley. And I fear for my safety, because I sleep right there in the living room, in the front room. Okay, I don't have a pole right there, so if they back out, they're gonna hit me. I sleep there. Okay, I don't have a pole, I went to the alderman, they said they don't do poles anymore. Okay, so right there in the, where the bushes, they, that's where my car parks, right there on the street. And they back out from the alley to turn, and they hit my car. That fence that they have right there by the garage was broken like a couple of months after they built it. So it's very dangerous. And I'm in danger in my house, because I have nothing to, to back me up over there except the bush. And it's very congested, anybody can come and see it. And they are not parking in the parking lots, because I live right next to it. I go by there because I do have a granddaughter there, I don't know both of them, after school matters. As a matter of fact, I like it, I got my granddaughter going there, it's just the congestion, no police supervision. And no, no parking, they don't have really parking, people are not parking in their parking lots. They're parking on the street, they got a bus stop right there in Cicero, so they're not parking there, they're parking on Rosco. And we got a permit zone here, and I got a handicap parking there, but they don't respect it. And they had told me, the principal had told me that he was going to talk to the parents, but they don't listen. You can come anytime in the afternoon and see how congested it is, I can't even get out of my car or go in my car. It's very bad, very dangerous for me.
Ms. Perez.
I fear for my life here.
Ms. Perez, do you, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Build me a fence in front, maybe it'll secure me, but right now, as it is right here, and I don't have money for it, friends. I cannot, I don't, I don't feel safe. And they don't feel safe either with that wooden fence, because they did not, there's a lot of traffic. They all come down Rosco, because there's no bumps, traffic bumps, so they come down that street. And we got intrinsic school over there, there's a lot of traffic down Rosco. We got a scam and down the street, they all have to go down Rosco to get in the school. Right, my granddaughter goes to intrinsic, so this is traffic all the time. After four o'clock, it's just, you can't even walk out there or cross the street. And if they're gonna make it bigger, there's gonna be more kids, of course. So it's bad now, imagine later. And that big parking lot in front of the garage, that's exactly where they go, they park all around Rosco, they're not going to the parking lot. They don't go around. The other street of Rosco going west is a one way. Starting right here on Cicero is a two way. And there's not enough room for two cars, so we're getting crashed. They have knocked down my mirror, my daughter's mirror, everything. And then our cars crashed on the sides, it's terrible, it wasn't like this when I bought the house, I bought it back in 2008. It's become hell, at four o'clock, you could come by and check for yourself. And it's all because of the after school matters, and everybody tries to avoid going to Bowman down Cicero, because it's too much traffic. So they take kidding, they go down Rosco, yes. It's very bad, and then we don't have police supervision, because I never see a policeman there, I'm always sitting in the front room. I never see a policeman, I call because I got a handicap sign, and they still, they take two hours if they do. So I don't know, the alderman is in charge of that, or, but that's how it is. And this is a permit zone, they're not respecting. And the principal had assured me that I'm not gonna have no parking issues, which I am having, they crashed my car.
Okay.
That is my problem, I don't have nothing against the school or the people that go there or nothing, I do think it's a beautiful place for the kids. It's just the congestion of the traffic, the people not obeying going into the parking lot, it's things like that that worry me. Or somebody coming inside my house, they, they, they hit my car, so they go in my house.
And you're, you're talking about the, the pick up and drop off, is that?
Yeah, yeah, they're picking up, especially.
Okay, all right, thank you for, for coming here and, and stating your objection. We're now going to go back.
Going to the, I have complained to the, we bore us, alderman, that they, you know.
Okay, okay. Now, I'm gonna send it back to the applicant to respond.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Perez, for appearing with us today. I am sorry for what you've encountered, I'm, I'm very happy your granddaughter is part of After School Matters and enjoys the program. So that's good news. We are happy to, as, as Terrence O'Brien said in his testimony, and I mentioned in mine, there are 38 parking spaces, of which our parking requirement for the city of Chicago, the Department of Planning and Development, is four parking spaces. So we are well overparked, which doesn't include that area that isn't even marked as parking spaces. What I would volunteer, and Michelle Cossey Drake is, is here with us, is certainly After School Matters will reach out to all of the parents of the participating members at this location, specifically that have pickup and or drop off in this timeframe that you've said is, is really congested. I can't speak to the police department, a surveillance of the area, but, but we're happy to, you know, attempt to coordinate a meeting to address the issue.
They should surveillance the area.
No, I, I completely agree with you.
In dangers in the area.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you, I'm, I'm sorry to hear you're, you're not feeling like that's happening. But as I said, and Michelle, I don't know if you want to expand, if there's other ways to do outreach, but certainly After School Matters will reach out to all of the parents and families that participate at this location in After School Matters, and urge them, in fact, to come through the parking lot and, and not use Rosco as a staging area.
Because she was the mother of a girl that goes to After School Matters, the one that crashed my car.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that.
She backed in from the alley.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry to hear that. Go ahead, Michelle.
Um, I, I, we will definitely work with the parents to ensure that they continue to use the two cutouts that we have. The way that we have it set up is that there is a drop off and pickup point inside the fence, so that they
That's what I do, that's what I do with my granddaughter, but people are not doing that.
Yes, and out of the cutout, so we will remind them of that. We will also be certain to put, remind the teens of that. I will note that a great deal of our teens walk to the site as well as ride their bikes to the sites. And the relationship with intrinsic, their students attend as well, but they walk to the site. But we will do our absolute best to address any of the concerns that you have highlighted.
They walk there, but they get picked up in the afternoon.
Well, I would also like for you to know
Excuse me, I'm on the window all day.
We are always working with the police department, we have given them our times and dates for all of our programs, when we're in session, when we're not, so that we could partner with them in ways that make sense to make it as safe as possible, not just for our teens, but also for the rest of the community, including all of the issues that may happen as a direct result of traffic, where the bus stop is located, et cetera. So we are your partner, we are here with you. You are welcome to reach out directly to me, and I will work directly with you should you encounter some additional concerns related specifically to After School Matters.
I, I, I have a question for the applicant. Could you maybe describe pickup and drop off? Is there, is there anybody out there helping to coordinate the pickup and drop off?
Yes, there, let me make sure I'm not on mute, oh, yes, there is. We have staff that's situated at the building, we have program specialist, program managers, and a facilities manager, along with our security staff. And they are situated out there to make sure that the traffic is coming in and out of the building appropriately. I, I really have to attest, I go out there often, particularly on one day a week when programs are in session, and I have not seen a line of parents waiting to pick up their kids, nor to drop them off since most
Because the cold weather's coming, and the snow, that's gonna be even another nightmare.
Yes, and I am attesting in a way that is reflective of each of our sessions, whether it's the summer, fall, or spring, during inclement weather or otherwise.
And I'd like to just add, if I could, to what Michelle said. In addition to the teens riding bikes and walking, there's also a lot that use public transportation. But, but we're hearing your concerns, Ms. Perez, and Michelle is generously offered to contact parents, remind them, and then I'm sure we'll also work with the staff she already outlined to make sure that they're doing what they can, to make sure the drop off and pickup is concentrated in the lot and the drop off rather than Rosco Street.
Okay, I've been out there dropping off my granddaughter, I never saw anybody out there.
Okay.
So I guess they're not doing the job or something. Because I drop her off, even though I live here, but I pick her up from the school intrinsic and take her to the after school matters, but I don't see nobody else.
Okay. Okay, well, again, as Michelle said, we're, we are a neighbor, we want you to be happy. We are happy to talk through improvements, but have steps that we've outlined to take to address the concerns that you've raised.
Okay.
And look forward to working with you more proactively.
With, with, with regard to the, to the, to the repurposing of the garage, what, I, I heard that it was gonna be used for a greenhouse on part of it, what, what else are you contemplating for that garage structure?
Right.
Michelle, do you want to answer that?
Yes, we're going to use it for a welding program and also for a bike repair program. We have all of which we have or have done our assessment in terms of what the program would look like.
Welding, should I fear fire?
Are there, are there any other questions from the board?
I had a question just about, you know, one of the, you know, that shot, the, the drawing that reflected, I think, you know, kids with bikes coming in and out of the new facility, yeah. So as I understand it, like, that door that's open where the person is putting the bike in, that is facing the street, is that right?
No, that's the north elevation.
That's the north elevation, okay. And so the side that's currently reflected on Rosco that has the three garage doors and the curb cut, is there a modification planned to that side of the building?
I can answer that if you want me to, client. You can see on the drawing, this is Terry O'Brien talking, you can see on the drawing there. Originally, there was three overhead doors, two doubles and one single. And afterwards, in the lower center, center panel there on the left, you'll see there's gonna be one, two overhead doors. There's one on the east and one on the west with access to Rosco.
So they're gonna be coming in through there, or coming out? Of that traffic is gonna be dangerous.
I don't understand.
For the kid, for the kids driving bikes in there with all this traffic, we'll get here.
No, they're coming from the other side.
They got doors.
Coming from the north side.
So the bike entrance that we, we see is the north side, but on the south side, you're telling us, Mr. O'Brien, that there will be still two overhead doors that allow access for pedestrians or vehicles?
And whatever, you know.
Uh huh, and so the curb cut will remain on Rosco?
Based on this plan, yes.
Yes, yes it will.
And is the main entrance to this new use of the garage to be on the south side or the north side, or will it be both?
It will actually be on the, the, the west side, so if you look at the business elevation number four, you can see that door right there, which is also reflected in the rendering that we were showing earlier. That's, that's gonna be the sort of principal means of coming and going. The doors that are shown in the south, yeah, thank you, thank you. The doors shown on the south exterior elevation are for maybe occasionally use. The setback there is about fifteen feet, I believe, from the street with an existing curb cut. That's to remain. We just wanted an extra, some extra doors there, just in terms of convenience. To, if needed, but those aren't the primary doors to come and go by.
So we're showing that it says After School Matters, those doors are gonna be closed.
The, the doors will be, certainly the, we need to maintain security. So the doors will typically stay closed. There might be some days when the weather's nice, where, you know, let's say the overhead garage door that's shown there might be open during classroom, during class time.
Yeah, because I don't see the doors on that design there. You see where that guy with the red shirt, that's the south side of the building.
That's, that's the west side.
West side. So that pink door is gonna be the main pedestrian entrance to the building? Is that the plan? Okay.
It is probably the door, the main entrance door right now.
I believe those two big doors are going to be on the south side, right?
Yes, south elevation.
So that's gonna hit Roscoe Street. Okay.
I have a question for the applicant. Could you describe a little bit more about this, this welding program that you're gonna implement in this, in this garage? What that is, you know, does it require, you know, somebody have to be licensed to do that?
I can describe the programmatic components, and then perhaps, Mark, you could describe what are the requirements that are being considered. From a programmatic perspective, we are, we are creating a welding program that's modeled after other programs that we've, we've been in partnership with in, in high schools. And we are doing that work with partnering with unioned organizations to help us figure out what's the best way to provide the program, as well as the best way to set it up. And we've done our due diligence in terms of figuring out what's the safest way to provide a welding program in that edifice. And it will be for teens who have an interest in welding, in science, in STEM programming, with an opportunity to earn income while they're in that program, whether it's a stipend or wages. And then we'd like, through our partnership with, with unions, to be able to allow them to move into a unioned program apprenticeship so that that work that they've learned at After School Matters will then translate into a career.
And you have a few wooden fences around the building. There's a few wooden, wood fences. Like the one that goes towards the alley that's wood. Because I remember that they hit that wood fence and they knocked it down. They crashed into it, and they also crashed into the pole, the light pole. It's really dangerous traffic around here. They're like, oh, I have road rage.
The, the fence that was damaged and the pole was not damaged by anyone at After School Matters or by anyone that was dropping off or picking up a teen. We have been, we've been giving a settlement for the cost of the repair of that fence. I mean, we have repaired the fence, but it was not in direct correlation to any of After School Matters work.
And, and Michelle, the fence has been repaired and was not left in any disrepair for an extended period of time?
Absolutely not. We repaired it without, and was later reimbursed for that, using insurance money.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, are there, are there any remaining questions from the board? Counselor Dagnan, you can do a brief closing if you want. I do think we have a lot on this, but choice is yours.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Perez, as I said. And just reiterate the words of Michelle Cossey Drake, the general counsel for After School Matters with us today. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to work with Ms. Perez and look forward to doing so moving forward. And have outlined steps that we will take to proactively reach out to the parents and students that participate in the programming at After School Matters to draw them into the parking lot and ask them to avoid Roscoe. As Michelle Cossey Drake also said, they have a regular working relationship with the police. And I would assume at the next meeting, this can be raised and the concerns along Roscoe Village.
And if I have problems, who should I talk to? Always. Who should I talk, should I talk to the alderman? Because I don't think he's.
I think if you have operational concerns, Michelle already volunteered herself. Again, her name is Michelle Cossey Drake, when she's general counsel for After School Matters. And then, you know, you can feel free to reach out to the alderman, certainly. You know, or the police department if you choose. But as I heard, Michelle wants to make sure this issue is addressed in what she can manage through the operations of the parents and teens at After School Matters and also in her working relationship with the police department.
Okay.
Okay. So again, we are excited about the existing community center that's been there since 2016 and the need to expand the community center space into this existing one-story garage that's 2,240 square feet. It's been underutilized and just used for storage, as we see from the rendering that's up. The access is off of the west side of the building away from Roscoe. And the greenhouse is on the north side of the building, again, away from Roscoe. We will continue to work and look forward to working with Rosa Perez. But we love to continue this operation and continue to serve the teens of Chicago with exploring their dreams and talents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, bye.
Next up is 359-22-S. This is 3951 South MLK Drive. See here, if you are here in support or objection, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. All right, I can see that it looks like we've got Counselor Horowitz, and we've got the applicant, Andre Anthony. So let me get you sworn in. Andre Anthony, can you please state your name and address, please?
I think Chairman, Mr. Andre Anthony, oh, he has audio now. Okay, sorry.
Can you hear me now? I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, great. I'm ready to sway in, sir.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Andre P. Anthony, owner of Andre P. Anthony Barber Salon. My address is 3951 South King Drive.
Oh, you gotta, yeah, you gotta turn that off.
I turned it off. Address is 3951 South King Drive, Chicago, Illinois, 60653.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, sir.
Okay. And Joe Ryan, are you here on this one?
I am.
Oh, okay, great. Well, you've already been sworn, and your expertise has been recognized.
Thank you.
And then Counselor Horowitz. You can, hold on, let me see here. If there are any supporters or objectors, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. One second. Okay, seen none. Actually, before I give it to you, Counselor, let me read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. This is the recommendation for 359-22-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art service facility scalp micropigmentation. All right, Counselor, you can proceed. There are no objectors here, so you can do the short form.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Blake Horowitz, and present with me is Andrew Anthony and Joseph Ryan. Mr. Ryan has submitted his expert report, and Mr. Anthony is the applicant. And he has submitted his affidavit and documentation. May I begin?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Mr. Anthony, can you, can you spell your last name, please?
Sure, last name Anthony, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y.
And you run a business and a president, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
A barber salon?
That's correct.
At 3951 South Dr. Martin Luther King Drive.
That's correct.
And how long have you been in business?
I've been in business for fifteen years, since 2007.
You're seeking to obtain a special use permit to establish a body art service in your existing barber shop that is located at a B3-3 zoning district?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and what are your hours of operation?
Hours of operation is 7:00 a.m. to about 7:00 in the evening. I work by appointments, so.
Do you have employees?
I do. I do have independent contractors who work alongside me. I have two of them.
Okay. And you submitted an affidavit in connection with your interest in securing a special use permit?
That is correct, sir.
And your affidavit is truthful and you adopted fully?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you submitted notice to everyone within 200 feet by USPS first-class mail relative to you seeking the special use permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have.
Great. Thank you. Do you want to get Joe Ryan on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, are you, are you here?
I am.
Okay, great. You submitted a report in connection with the special use permit, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you expected the subject property and surrounding environments to complete an analysis as to whether or not the property meets the standards required for granting a special use permit, special use application by the City of Chicago zoning board of Hills, okay? And what were your findings?
I examined all of the criteria, and the proposed use did meet all of the criteria needed by this board to grant the special use.
And your report, you adopt your report, and the content of your report is truthful?
Yes.
Okay, anything of interest you'd like to add to your report to help the board?
No, it's an existing business, and this is just a supplementary service that Mr. Anthony will provide.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. I've got a question for, for Mr. Anthony. Could you just describe what scalp micropigmentation is?
Yes, sir. Scalp micropigmentation is a hair loss services for those who are experiencing hair loss, male pattern baldness, sometimes for females, alopecia. And what it does is, it is a cornelism technique, to whereas it's able to give the illusion of hair pigment. So these tiny little follicles are, impressions are made into the scalp, which gives the illusion of a hair follicle, which allows the person to wear a very, very low cropped haircut, as opposed to being bald, or as opposed to showing an alopecia.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that description. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, this is Commissioner Esposito. Just to elaborate on that, so is this akin to a tattoo process, or is, how is it administered?
It is akin to the tattoo. It's not the exact same pigment or the needles. It's a different type of needle and pigment. It's very similar. But unlike tattoo where it's a specific art, you can get different types of art with tattoo. You may get someone's name on your body. You may get your, you know, different designs, you know, as it relates to a tattoo. But this is specific for hair loss. So it falls up under the tattooing, but it's a different procedure because it's designed specifically for hair loss, in that sense.
Great, thank you. And can you describe the qualifications required to administer the procedure?
Sure. Qualifications is that you have to have some advanced training. Typically, it's a four-day training, several thousand dollars. I've taken training in New York with a company called Scalp Micro USA. And basically, what they do is you do a theory session for about two days, and then the other two days are hands-on. And so for me, I have, I've been licensed for 21 years as a licensed cosmetologist. I've been servicing men's and women's hair for 30 years. And this profession, it stumbled upon me. I got the credentials, so I'm just going through the city's process. But, and again, I also work for Hair Club for men and women. And I tie that in because it's still part of the hair loss industry and the hair loss service. So not everyone is gonna wanna wear a toupee, toupee which is designed to give you a longer length, a longer hair. Some people may want a more natural look, so that's where the scalp micropigmentation comes into play.
Terrific, thank you.
And, and just to further what you've been talking about, you're, you're gonna be doing scalp micropigmentation, which you've testified about, but you're not doing any kind of body art tattooing, the kind of traditional, you know, tattooing someone's name or, you know, a picture or something on an arm or something. That's not what you're doing, true?
Exactly. I will not be doing that. I will not be doing that.
Okay, any other questions from the board? I think we have what we need. Thank you, everyone, for coming in. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is 360-22-S. It's 5100 West Western.
Chair, this is Commissioner McDonald, just to note that I'm recused on this one. Thank you.
I'm sorry, this is West Harrison, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. If you are here in support or objection, this is again 360-22-S. If you are here in support or objection, uh, this is again three sixty dash twenty-two dash S fifty-one hundred West Harrison Street. Please raise your hand and we will get you, uh, promoted. Okay. Let's see here. All right, I can see we've got Adam Alonso. Got Hugh Edferz. Do we have, do we have Tyler Brown?
No, Tyler's, this is Steve Friedland, the attorney representing Tyler, our architect, wasn't able to stay this long, so we've lost him, but he wasn't intending to give any testimony anyway.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, so it's just, uh, Adam and Hugh?
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Uh, Adam, uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure. Adam Alonso, fifty-one hundred West Harrison Street.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And Hugh Edferz, could you state your name and address, please? Uh, you might be muted.
Hugh, if you're on a phone, I think it requires you to do star six.
He's not on the phone, but he is not unmuting or accepting promotion, so may not be at in front of his device.
You were muted.
Here we go.
How about now? Okay?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Good, good thing.
Uh, great, uh, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Hugh Edforz. Business address now is, um, three sixteen North Michigan Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Friedland, uh, no, uh, objectors have raised their hand, so you are free to do the short form.
Excellent. Thank you very much. My name is Steve Friedland with the law firm of Applegate Thorn Thompson. Here on behalf of Build Inc., we are back before you, uh, requesting, uh, basically an amended special use for, uh, the community center that the board previously granted approval for in two thousand and twenty, September two thousand and twenty. Uh, Build operates programs designed to help Chicago youth who come from some of the city's most challenged neighborhoods. Uh, they help them overcome diversity with support and skills training. And, uh, Build has been doing this for a long time. They're an organization that has existed for over fifty years. They've existed at this current location for ten years. And two years ago, we came before the board because Build was looking to expand from the existing one-story building, which if you're looking at this picture, you can sort of see right behind that piece of equipment. And their desire was to build a new addition, a three-story, a part-three, part-two story addition um, on the property. And we received, uh, the positive approval of the ZBA to do that. Build, as you can see, is under construction doing that. Um, but, um, this is a good thing for Bill, but unfortunately, we didn't do it back two years ago. Um, if you stay on this picture, um, to the left of that second floor that you, I'm sorry, third floor that you see there, which was office space, the left side of the building is a gymnasium. And there had always been a plan in the, um, uh, plans for the development that Build could add a third floor on top of the gymnasium, basically a mirror image to what is on the right side, to add additional offices. The reason why it wasn't in our original special use application is that Bill didn't have the funds to do that, to complete that. They have been more successful than they thought and during construction have raised sufficient funds to do that sixty-one hundred or so square foot office addition. This won't change the programming for the community center that we received two years ago. It is just to add additional office space because when community partners come in and work with Build, it gives them a place to work from while they're in the building. So it's, it's just to add that space. With that, um, uh, I would, uh, a- at this point like to, uh, speak directly to the witnesses.
Yes, uh, let, I'll, I'll let you do that, but let me, um, I forgot to read the department's recommendations, so let me do that. And then, uh, you can speak with the witnesses and honestly, you can have them swear to their affidavits and then we'll open it up to the board for questions.
Got you.
Okay, this is the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation for three sixty dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the expansion of an existing community senator, center with a fifty-three car parking through a proposed third-floor addition above the gymnasium provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Build Inc. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated June third, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by Landon Bone Barker Architects. Okay, Counselor, go ahead.
Let me, let me start with Adam. Adam, if you unmute, um, do you affirm that the affidavit you signed in connection with the special use application is true and correct and you affirm the statements and conclusions you made in that affidavit?
I do.
Let me ask Hugh, uh, if, if you can unmute. So Hugh, you prepared a special use analysis and report associated with this request to expand the, um, special use. I would also ask just one thing to note. You also did the report for the original special use application, is that correct, Hugh?
That's correct.
Um, and do you affirm that the special use analysis you produced in support of this request is true and correct and you affirm the statements and conclusions that you made in that report?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we, I really don't have any further questions for that.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board? I think we have what we need for this one. We're gonna take it under advisement.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is three sixty-one dash twenty-
Well, this was a quick-
Oh, somebody- Okay, there we go. Okay. Uh, all right, next up is three sixty-one dash twenty-two dash S in three sixty-two dash twenty-two dash Z. This is thirty-two hundred to thirty-two oh eight North Costner. If you are in support or objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. All right, and so we've got, uh, Counselor Fatikas. And then it's like we have Sarah, uh, Ducatch. And then we got, uh, Terrence O'Brien is already on. Um, all right, let me, um, Counselor Fatikas, let me, uh, swear, um, your witness in and, uh, and then we will, I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, Chairman, just, uh, I think John Hannah should also be on as the project architect. I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I should be here. Oh, oh, you know what? Yes, you are on my list. Sorry about that, Mr. Hannah.
My video's not working, but that's all right. Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, all right, uh, let me start with, um, uh, Sarah Ducatch. Can you state your name and address, please?
Sarah Ducatch, eleven eighty-one, Karen Terrace's in Northbrook, six zero zero six two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, John, uh, Hannah, we haven't seen you today yet, have we?
Have not.
Okay, uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure. John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And, uh, Terrence O'Brien, uh, has already been sworn in and his expertise has been recognized. Uh, Counselor Fatikas, no one has raised their hand in objection, so, uh, if you want to do the short form, that would be appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Oh, actually, but before that, let me read the letter.
Thank you.
I always forget this. Okay. This is the Department of Planning and Development's, uh, recommendation with regard to calendar number three sixty-one dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed five-story thirty-dwelling unit building with an attached thirty-car garage, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan dated October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by Hannah Architects Inc. Counselor Fatikas, uh, the floor is yours and like I said, there's no objectors, uh, so you can do the short form and then we can open it up to the board for questions.
All right, sounds good. So again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Advent Properties LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at thirty-two hundred through oh eight North Costner Avenue. Uh, the property itself is located at the intersection of North Costner and West Belmont and consists of a single zoning lot that measures a hundred and twenty-five feet wide by only a hundred and seven point six feet deep. The site is currently improved with a, uh, one-story restaurant building and an onsite surface parking lot. The applicant is proposing to take down the existing building and develop the property with a new five-story building that would contain thirty residential units and thirty garage parking spaces. Although the proposed building otherwise complies with the bulk requirements, the issue is that the lot's substantial depth dimension of a hundred and seven point six feet prevents the applicant from providing the loading berth required for the project. So in order to permit our design, the applicant is seeking a variation to waive the loading berth requirement. Additionally, the applicant is seeking a special use to permit residential uses below the building's second floor. Again, Mr. Chairman, this is proposed as an all-residential building with no retail component. Um, the special use is required because we are in a C-one dash three zoning district. Three witnesses have already been, uh, sworn in and I would like to call Sarah Dupe as my first witness.
Please do.
Um, Sarah, I'm gonna try and keep this short. Um, you are the managing member of Advent Properties LLC, series two, three, four, five, is that right?
Yes. Yes.
And as part of this process, Sarah, um, is it true that you and I completed a sworn, uh, witness affidavit on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, John Hannah is my next witness. John, um, with respect to the, uh, hardship in this case, is it directly related to the one hundred and seven point six, um, depth dimension that the lot has? Uh, it is, yes. And if we, if we had another seventeen feet of lot depth, we would have been able to design a code-compliant loading berth onsite, right? That, that is correct. And other than the, um, the loading berth issue, the rest of the building was designed to comply with the bulk requirements of the C-one three zoning district, is that right? That is true. And John, you also prepared a written, uh, a written witness report, uh, witness statements for this case? I did. And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided to the board? Uh, it would. Thank you very much. And then lastly, um, Mr. O'Brien, um, you prepare, uh, your assignment in this case was to evaluate whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special use, is that right?
That is correct. I addressed those criterias as well as the variation criterias.
And you did prepare a written report for the application, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And Sarah, it's your understanding I've submitted a copy of that report to the board?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements and findings, uh, provided in that report, is that right?
Yes.
Chairman, I tried to do a, a quick version. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, our team would be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have, uh, about our program.
I, I, I appreciate that, uh, Counselor Fatikas. Uh, I, um, do have a question, um, in a since you're, um, proposing to get rid of the loading berth, how does the applicant, uh, intend to handle move-in and move-out?
So, and that's what we worked with the department on was basically twofold. We wanted, and I'm not trying to go off topic. The first is we wanted to make sure there was some, um, aesthetic to the Belmont frontage because it is a corner property. So we worked with EPD on that design and then what we also tried to accomplish was, um, being able to handle maneuver smaller move-in, move-out trucks um, that would be able to use the garage. So the goal was to get any type of move-in, move-out, loading, unloading off of Costner, off of West Belmont and have that contained onsite. And what we've discussed with the applicant is um, being that, being that we're going to, uh, maintain ownership of the property, we can work that into the lease that certain sizes of trucks are the only ones that could be accepted for move-in, move-out. So there's a way for us to control that. And again, the building gives us, uh, affords us that, uh, space onsite.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions from the board? I think we have what we need. We're gonna take this one under advisement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up is three sixty-three dash twenty-two dash S and three sixty-four dash twenty-two dash Z. This is six twenty-nine West Lake. If you are here in, uh, support or objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. All right, let's see here.
Chairman, just as a quick matter, um, the primary witness, Mr. Gene Bernstrom, is calling in. Um, he says he's on the line. It's an eight-four-seven-two-seven-five number. So I just wanted to give tech a, a head start on that if there was any kind of issue, uh, promoting him.
Thank you for that. I think, I think we've got him here. Uh, he's, he's muted, uh, but he's, but he's here with us. Uh, could you, um, Mr. Uh, Bernstrom, could you, uh, there we go.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, sir, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure. Gene Bernstrom, five-thirty North LSD, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one one.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kukalius, uh, could you state your name and address, please?
There we go. Bill Kokalius, Axios Architects, one eighty-eight North Wells, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh six.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
And Sylvester Kerwin, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Sylvester Bud Kerwin. I'm, uh, president and owner of S. J. Kerwin Associates. With offices at seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And the board recognizes your expertise based on many past appearances.
Thank you.
Counselor Fatikas, uh, no one has, uh, raised their hand in objection, uh, so you are free to do the short.
Chairman, this is Texas Board. I did promote, uh, someone named James Ascot.
Oh, all right, let me see here. And if you're not speaking right now, if you could please mute.
Hello?
Uh, yes, Mr. Ascot, are you here in support or, or objection?
I'm here to support the, uh, the development.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Um, okay, um, Counselor Fatikas, we've got a supporter. We have, uh, no objectors. You are free to, uh, do the short form and then we'll go to the, um, to the supporter. Uh, but before we do any of that, let me, not gonna forget this time. I'm actually gonna read the recommendation at the beginning. So here we go. This is the recommendation for three sixty-three dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to reduce the required parking spaces from thirty-four to two for a proposed eight-story forty-nine dwelling unit building with ground floor retail use, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October third, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by Axios Architects and Consultants. And with that, Counselor Fatikas, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, sir, for the record. Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, uh, Rogers Park Holdings LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at six twenty-nine West Lake Street. As you can see from the survey or even the aerial, um, the, uh, subject lot is uniquely again shaped and, and, uh, it's- um, the, uh, subject lot is uniquely again shaped and, and, uh, it's located at the corner of North Displanes and West Lake Street. Uh, specifically, there's forty-three point two feet of frontage along Lake and a hundred and forty feet of frontage along Displanes. The property is also a designated transit serve location based on its proximity to the CTA station at Clinton Street, as well as the Ogilvy Transportation Center at five hundred West Madison. The subject property is currently improved with a one-story restaurant building and an offsite parking area. The applicant is proposing to take down the existing building and develop the site with a new eight-story mixed-use building. Again, the proposed building will have retail space at grade and a total of forty-nine residential units above. In order to permit the building, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the required rear setback for floors containing residential units from thirty feet to zero point one-two feet. The applicant is also seeking a companion special use, uh, to reduce the number of off-street parking spaces, again, from thirty-four as required to two that are, would be provided. The three witnesses have been sworn in, and with that, I would ask to call Gene, uh, Bernstrom as my first witness. Gene, are you, can you unmute?
I'm here.
Gene, again, you are the manager of the applicant Rogers Park Holdings LLC.
Yes, I am.
And you're, uh, proposing again to develop the property with the eight-story mixed-use building, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And as part of this process, is it true that you and I, uh, drafted witness statements, um, summarizing, uh, your position in this case?
Yes.
If you were to continue to testify?
I'm sorry, one more time. I didn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry. Uh, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you very much. Um, if I could move on to my, uh, next, uh, witness, Mr. Bill Kokalios. Um, Bill, again, you're the pro- Architect of Record for the pro- the project?
Yes, I am.
And, um, in terms of hardship, the issue in this case is really a combination of a uniquely shaped lot, but also the fact that it's a corner lot with two frontages, is that right?
That's correct.
And that's an issue specifically in this case because by utilizing the transit serve location ordinance, we're essentially treating two fronts of the property, the, the, uh, Lake Street side as well as the Displain Street side, is that right?
That's correct.
And I, I don't wanna go too far into it because it wasn't our findings of fact, but had we organized our building and fronted it technically on Displanes, uh, Displanes Avenue, uh, we wouldn't have a side setback requirement based on that building orientation, is that right?
That's correct.
So really, what we're asking for is a reduction in the rear using Lake as the front, so what would otherwise not be a, a required setback, right?
That's correct, yes.
Kind of our strategy or approach in positioning the building on the lot.
Yes.
And Bill, is it true that you worked with the Department of Planning and Development's, uh, Plan Coordinator as well as, uh, the department's Nancy, uh, Resovich in particular on the design of the proposed building?
Yes.
And based on that design and redesign, you believe the proposal meets all of the criteria for a variation as well as the transit serve location, uh, design, uh, elements, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Bill, is it true that you, uh, also, uh, or that we also prepared a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes, I did.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
That's correct.
Thank you. And then lastly, uh, Chairman, if I can call, uh, Mr. Kerwin. Uh, Bud, your, uh, assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would apply or would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And that also includes the additional criteria for a transit serve location application, is that right?
Yes, the, the subject property is within six hundred and seventy feet of the L station, uh, at, uh, Lake and Clinton, and as well as, uh, within a distance to the Metro Center.
I probably had some question, two, two blocks, uh.
Yes, 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 that's, that's correct.
But you were also asked to provide, uh, an opinion regarding the requested variation, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And in both with respect to the special use and variation, you believe that all of the approval criteria are being met?
Yes, I do believe it's all being met in there.
And is it also true that you believe the design elements that Mr. Kokalios just spoke to are also part of that transit serve location designation?
Yes, it is. The existing, uh, restaurant is no longer the highest and best use, and the plans that they developed makes a functional and economic use of the site.
And, uh, is it true that you prepared a written report summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case?
Yes, that is also correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with your written report?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you. Again, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, concludes my abbreviated, uh, presentation. If you or the board members have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Thank you. Um, question about, uh, on-street parking. I, I saw in the findings of fact that there was a discussion of off-street parking, but could you talk a little bit about the availability of on-street parking in the area?
So I, either Bud or Bill, if you wanna answer that.
Well, uh, there is some regulated on-street parking on, on the, uh, fronting street, Displanes, as well as Lake Street at different various times. But there's also many, uh, private garage facilities, including one right next door to us, and within close walking distance. And, and essence, that's the difference. There's there's those spaces that are available. There's less vehicles, the people that are residing in this business, central business district that use a car. They use public transportation more, more often than not.
And, uh, if I may say, and I, if I can jump in a little bit to the, uh, units that were designed here, they're smaller units between, um, we have nineteen efficiency units, uh, which are around four hundred, five hundred square feet, so we don't anticipate a lot of the tenants, uh, parking in this building. It's not that type of building.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any, um, questions from the board? Could you, um, could you talk a little bit about the, uh, the, I know you talked a little bit about it already, but explain it for me a little bit more of the hardship, uh, here, because I do understand, I mean, you've got, wha- what are the dimensions of this lot?
So, Chairman, we have, we're, uh, forty-three point two feet wide along Lake Street and a hundred and forty feet deep along, um, Displanes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, trying, trying to explain the, the hardship. First off, it's, it's a uniquely, it's not a standard or typical twenty-five by one twenty-five lot. It's also a DX seven zoning district, so it contemplates obviously a little bit more density than what maybe your residential or commercial districts would allow. What we tried to do was organize the building so that, again, it fit the, the footprint of the lot. Had we treated Displanes, uh, which we had the option to do, had we treated Displanes as our technical front, we would only have a forty-three point two-foot lot depth to work with, and that would have yielded thirteen point two feet of building area that we could build, um, using, again, the, the Displanes as our frontage. What's important to note on that, had we done that, we'd still be in front of the zoning board asking for a setback reduction because of that forty-three point two-foot distance that, that depth, um, which is substandard. But also important to note is that our south side, which would, using Displanes as the front, the south side wouldn't have a technical setback. So what we tried to do was just reorganize it, and maybe just, um, i- in the interest of just trying to come up with the best plan, organize it so that we use Lake as the front, which is where the, the retail space is located, and then try and fill in the rest of the site accordingly. Um, and I'd also point out, although it not is, is it not a technical hardship, there are requirements imposed by the Transit Serve Location Ordinance for street frontage on both sides. So we didn't have the ability to pull in or pull out. We had to actually be within five feet by code of the front, uh, of the side setback. So there were a couple other factors or, uh, requirements in play that allowed us to situate or orient the building the way we were proposing.
Okay, thank you.
That was a lot of information, I'm sorry.
No, I, no, I, 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 I appreciate that. Um, I appreciate that. Um, any, uh, any other questions from the board? I think we have what we need. We're gonna take this matter under advisement.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is oh, you know what? Did we lose, did we, did he, did we lose the supporter already? We had a supporter. I think we lost him. Well, he did say that he was in support.
I'm promoting him back in.
Oh, great, great.
He's back.
Excellent, Mr. Ascot, sorry. If you could unmute. Mr. Ascot, if you can unmute, you're muted right now. I think it's, uh, oh, there we go.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, I, you know, it's, I apologize. Uh, I, I forgot that we had a supporter on, on this one, and I do wanna get it in. Um, so, uh, if you could, um, uh, first state your name and address, please?
Sure, uh, James Ascot. I'm at, uh, two hundred North Jefferson, which is a condominium building, uh, kitty-corner to the property, is also, and also my office, which is five sixty-six West Lake. So I'm, I'm in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Uh, and, and do you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And now go, feel free, please express your support.
Yeah, I think that the, uh, that definitely the, the way they placed the, the property on the, uh, at least the development on the property makes a lot of sense than using it in the best, best fashion, uh, possible. And I think that, uh, given the neighborhood that we're in, we're very big high-rises, as, and this one fits the neighborhood very well. I, I appreciate the work they did on the balconies, opening it up to west to this, on Displanes, gives a lot of light, uh, given the fact that they have smaller units, which is a big plus for us in the neighborhood, for people that are doing the, the work, uh, that requires this basically small, small apartments, and people can afford those. So I appreciate that work that they've done. Uh, it's, it's a good development for the property. It's a good mix. Uh, and I think as far as parking is concerned, there's been street parking as well as a garage next door, uh, that abuts the property that is, uh, that has over, you know, two hundred units of parking spaces that are available. Uh, so that, that's another, uh, good plus as well. Plus, it's a TOD with the L, the Clinton stop only a block away. Uh, it's very convenient to go downtown or, uh, just walk across to the Fulton Corridor where there's, uh, Google and all the rest of the, the new corporations that, uh, are looking for help in that neighborhood. So given all those con- considerations, I think that's what makes us a positive, a positive, uh, development. Uh, so that's, that's why I support it.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for, uh, for, for coming in and expressing your support. Um, and now that we've got your testimony, we are going to, uh, take this matter under advisement. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, now, next up is case number, calendar number three sixty-five dash twenty-two dash Z. This is eleven oh-six West Wrightwood. See here, if you are here in objection or support, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. All right, I can see we've got Nick Peterson, we've got Scott Fortman, and we've got David Davidson.
Yes, so they can see.
No, Davidson's over there.
And then, uh, let's see, um, Ed, Ed Nicewick, are you, are you here in, uh, objection or support?
I'm here in objection.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Um, and I think we've got the, uh, the witnesses here. Um, I'll get the witnesses sworn in in a second, but, um, since we have an objector, oh, we also have someone. We have Taylor here, yes, we do have Tay- Taylor, uh, do you wanna speak at the beginning or, or, or at the end of this matter?
I'm happy to speak now.
Okay, um, let me, um, before you speak, though, let me, uh, describe to the, uh, are you, are you in supporter or objection of this matter?
Uh, no opposition.
No opposition, okay. Um, let me, um, explain the process to the objector, uh, because he does have an opportunity to, to ask you a question if, if he has any. Um, so, uh, Mr. Nicewick, here's how the, uh, proceeding is, is going to go, since you're here in objection. Um, the applicant is gonna put on their case in chief. All their witnesses will testify. Um, and, uh, then we will turn it to, uh, you to state your objection, and you also have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Um, and because we're gonna have, um, Taylor Ness from the Alderman's Office speak, uh, uh, on this matter, you can also ask him any questions at the beginning here, if you wanna ask any questions. Uh, and then we'll t- turn it back to the applicant for, uh, uh, rebuttal and, and a, and a brief closing, okay? Um, so with that, um, Mr. Ness, you have already been sworn in today. We've, we've, we've seen you already once today. Um, so please, uh, uh, tell us why you're here today.
Yes, I have, uh, reviewed this application with Alderman Smith when she was still in office, and again, asked this morning, have re-reviewed with Alderman Knudsen since he stepped in last month. Uh, we reviewed the content and subject matter of the application, and we have no opposition to the material of the request. We would have liked to have heard direct neighbor feedback from the resident of the corner property. I believe it's eleven oh-two West Wrightwood. We were not able to secure any form of communication, either in support or explicit objection up to this point. So our position was to simply allow this to go both for the board on its own merits without us opposing or supporting it either way. Um, and I believe that the board, the planning board of the Wrightwood Neighbors Association felt the same. So that's all I really have to say.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Nicewick, uh, this wouldn't be your, your time to state your objection, but because we do have Mr. Ness on, uh, did you, did you wanna ask him any questions?
Yeah, um, first off, I'm here with my wife also, Anne McCrossan.
You know, let me, let me get you sworn in. Um, uh, Mr. Mr. Nicewick, and you know what? Let me ask, uh, Mr. Ness a question here, too. Um, Mr. Ness, do you, do you need to go right now, or can we, it might be better if we get the questions after the, after the case in chief is put on and he objects, or do you have to be, go somewhere?
I block off a whole day for this.
Oh, well, that is great. I'm happy to hear that. Um, you know what, Mr. Nicewick, if it's okay with you, I think it, the better procedure here would be to have the applicant put on his case, and then you can state your objection, and you can ask questions of both the applicant and Mr. Ness, okay?
Okay.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you very much. Um, so, uh, let me get, uh, the applicant's witnesses sworn. Um, Mr. Davidson, can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, David Davidson, twenty-two twenty-five North Burling, Chicago, six oh-six-one-four.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Peterson, can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Nick Peterson with Gibbons Fortman Associates. Uh, we're at nine hundred North Franklin, Suite six-one-two in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Scott Fortman, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Scott Fortman, architect, president of Gibbons Fortman Associates. We're at nine hundred North Franklin, Suite six-twelve, Chicago, six oh-six-one-o.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, uh, all right, Counselor Fatikas, since we obviously do have an objector here today, please put on the, uh, the full case. And one thing that I do wanna say is, um, to the extent there is something in an affidavit that you want to be put into the record here, please don't just have your witness swear to the affidavit. Please actually elicit it, uh, in testimony so that the objector can hear it, okay?
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
So again, for the record, Chairman Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the co-applicants, Daving LLC and twenty-six-ten Seminary LLC. The applicants own the subject property at eleven oh-six West Wrightwood. The, uh, subject lot is uniquely shaped L lot with frontage- The subject lot is uniquely shaped L lot with frontages on both West Wrightwood and North Seminary. In two thousand and eighteen, the applicants came before this board and secured a setback reduction to permit a three-story, single-family home with an attached garage. That approval was part of calendar number five seventy-nine eighteen Z and a copy of the final resolution was submitted with our findings of fact. Uh, work on the single-family home is well underway, consistent with the plans and permits that were issued by the city. The applicants are now proposing to construct a second floor addition above the garage on the portion of the lot that fronts along North Seminary Avenue. The concept would allow the applicants to establish essentially an in-law unit for their family to use. Although the underlying RT four zoning district allows the second unit and the proposed FAR total is also compliant, because of the lot's unique L shape, a variation is required to reduce the rear setback from thirty-seven point three four feet to seven point one two feet. Again, specifically, specifically to permit the addition above the garage. I have two primary witnesses on behalf of the applicant, Mr. David Davidson and our project architect, Mr. Scott Fortman. Uh, Nick Peterson from the Architectural Office is also available and, and can speak if there are questions specific to design or architecture. And with that, I would ask to call David as my first witness.
Okay.
Uh, David, you are the manager of actually both co-applicants, Dobbin LLC and twenty-six ten Seminary LLC, is that right?
Uh, Dobbington LLC, yes.
I'm sorry. And together, those two entities own the property at eleven oh six West Wrightwood, correct?
Correct.
As I described it, it's an L-shaped lot with frontages on both West Wrightwood and North Seminary, right?
Yes.
And again, you're in the process of finishing construction on a three-story, single-family home with an attached garage, right?
Yes, correct.
Now, the, the practical or useful front of the property is the Wrightwood side, is that right?
Yes.
And the attached garage would be accessed from North Seminary, right?
Correct.
Um, and that really, that starting point is consistent with the prior zoning board approval and the permits that have been issued by the city for construction of your home, correct?
Correct.
And you're now establishing or proposing to establish an in-law unit above the garage, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Your, your plans essentially call for a second story addition to the garage that follows the wall lines of that portion of the structure, correct?
Yes.
And as I stated in my introduction, your intent is to provide family members with a space of their own when they're visiting you, it's just to have their own unit to, to occupy.
Yes.
And, but still though, given the fact that there is a potential for rental income, you have provided the board with an economic analysis for the projected costs as well as anticipated return in the event you were to rent the unit, is that right?
Yes.
The point though here is that the project in its sum is motivated by your family needs and not a profit or revenue generating stream, right?
Correct.
And David, is it true that again, you did file witness statements on behalf of this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Scott, you're next. Again, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And you previously testified in that capacity before this board, is that right?
Yes.
You designed the proposed single-family home, actually the under construction, single-family home and attached garage at the subject property?
Yes.
And you also did design the proposed second story addition above the garage, is that right?
Correct.
And is it your professional opinion that the subject lots unique L shape is the real hardship that necessitates the requested setback reduction?
Yes.
Even so, your design for the proposed in-law unit follows the existing footprint of the garage and maintains the actual setbacks that are on the lot today, is that right?
Correct.
And for the record, the garage and the second floor addition are effectively replacing what used to be a three-story building that existed on that portion of the lot until about two thousand and eighteen, is that right?
That's correct.
And Scott, you confirm that the height dimension of the previously existing three-story building was thirty-two feet, correct?
Correct.
And can you please confirm for the board the proposed height of the garage with the second floor addition? Oh, Scott, you, you're on mute, Scott.
Oh, sorry. I think Nick Peterson can answer that better than I, as far as the height goes. Or do we have a drawing that's, shows the height?
Or if you could go to the elevation page, perfect.
Yeah, yeah, there we go. I can't read that on my screen, but the height's listed right there. It is shorter. By, I think at least eight feet.
It's just over twenty-one feet.
Okay.
So, so just to be clear for the record, we're replacing what was a thirty-two foot tall building with a, what would be a twenty, just over twenty-one foot building, correct?
Correct.
And we believe based on that, in terms of impact, the proposed two-story configuration would actually be less impactful than what previously existed on the subject lot, or at least that portion of the subject lot, is that right?
Correct.
And it's your professional opinion that the proposed design allows for the best use of the lot and remains consistent compatible with other residential buildings in the subject area, is that right?
Correct.
And Scott, it's your understanding again that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with these statements we did provide, correct?
Correct.
Uh, Chairman, again, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our program.
Any questions from the board before we go to the objector? All right, let's go to the objector now.
Wait, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Esposito, I'm sorry, I was on mute. A quick question, just for clarification. Was there a variance involved in the construction of this structure?
Yes, there was. In two thousand and eighteen, Commissioner, it was zoning board call number five seventy-nine eighteen Z. And that allowed for the three-story principal building that's effectively on the Wrightwood portion of the property and then the attached garage that fronts on the seminary. So yeah, and, and that was, again, the variations, the hardship in the L-shaped lot was recognized. The variations were approved and the applicant subsequently sought building permits and the construction that's occurred at the property is one hundred percent consistent with the previously approved plan set.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board before we go to the objector? Okay, Mr. Nicewick, you could unmute and then I'll, I'll get you sworn in. Um, and I think if, I think you mentioned your, your wife was there as well. If she's going to say anything, then we'll get her sworn in as well. All right, let's, let's start with you. Could you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Ed Nicewick, five oh six East Washington in Lake Bluff. I'm the owner of the eleven hundred West Wrightwood House.
Okay.
Right behind the subject house here, the garage.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And is your wife going to be testifying as well today?
Yes.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Anne McCrossan, five oh six East Washington, Lake Bluff, Illinois, six zero zero four four.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, whichever one of you wants to start, go ahead and state your objection and once you stated your objection, if you have questions for the applicant or the alderman, you are free to ask.
Okay, definitely. I think that this twenty-plus foot garage and apartment directly behind my lot is blocking the direct sunlight and the ventilation that I would achieve without that second floor there. And of note is the, the old unit that was there before actually had a ten-foot setback from my back lot, which was, was effectively eliminated when that garage went in. And now you're trying to add another ten feet above it and have no setback from my yard. Uh, so it's, it's quite closer and, and higher, you know, than the old uh, structure that had the large setback. That was adjacent to me. So that's one, some of the issues. Do you have anything to add?
I would just say so eleven hundred Wrightwood and eleven oh two, I believe have to be some of the oldest houses on the block. And just wrapping them around this other house on eleven oh six is, I think will really hurt the integrity of those two buildings. I does any, I don't know if this is an appropriate question, but does anybody know who owns eleven oh two? Cause we're quite surprised that they are not here today also, because this is going to really severely impact the houses and just the, you know, the tone and the history of the homes. And originally, my understanding is this second story rental unit is an addition. We were aware of the garage and we understood that that, those walls were now, they're adjacent to our backyard. But the second story apartment complex, from my understanding, is, is a second phase of this.
Yeah, and really, so what's happening is both the uh, well, that would be the north side would be blocked by the, the house behind us now. And also the west side is also blocked too, because that's eleven oh six goes over there also. And so now we have a courtyard that had, you know, beautiful sunlight and ventilation that's being completely blocked on two sides. And it wasn't like that before the eleven oh six went in. And it just seems kind of strange that the garage went in, never, never been used, never even done, anything happened, then suddenly this variance comes up and now we're going to make it a double, you know, the size. And we've already eliminated the setback that was there before.
Right.
Between our yards, so quite mysterious, you know, to, to us and we feel that it's really going to affect our property value.
And the, the question I have about the hardship, um, and you know, I'm new to this, I don't understand all this, but if they wanted a big garage now with a rental unit on top, it could have been behind eleven oh six, not on twenty-six ten property. And the hardship of the L shape, I don't really know if that's a hardship. They bought, you know, they chose to have an L-shaped lot.
Oh, okay, do, are you? Do you, uh, certainly we can have the applicant respond to the, to the points you've raised. Do you, do you have questions for the applicant or the, or the alderman?
I would just like to clarify, when this started, there was not going to be a second story apartment on top of the garage, is that correct?
Yes, the application that was presented in two thousand and eighteen did not contemplate a second story to the garage that fronts on to Kenmore.
Ken, not Kenmore.
I'm sorry, Seminary, I'm sorry, I'm confusing the two, I apologize.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and was the setback, why was the setback eliminated back then? And now you're talking about a setback now is, is a variance.
So that the setback was eliminated or reduced to permit the footprint of the building that's existing at the property today, the three-story principal building that fronts on to Wrightwood and then the garage, the attached garage, because it's an attached garage, it required a variation based on the L-shaped lot, we did secure a variation for that design. So the footprint of the building as it exists today is code compliant. What we're trying to accomplish again is following the building walls for the garage portion up one story so that we can permit a standalone unit above the garage.
Well, if it's an attached garage, does it have its own address? Like, why do two different people own the house and then the garage or, or however it's structured, I'm not sure.
That's, that's how they, they purchased the property, actually before the two thousand and eighteen variation application, so. I mean, they could consolidate it if they wanted to. I, I, I'm not representing them on, on that type of, that type of work.
But is there any issue in actually calling this an attached garage?
It is an attached garage. There isn't an issue, it's permitted as a single-family home with an attached garage.
So again, I would just question, you know, many people in the neighborhood, and we understand this, have these very big garages in back of their homes with roof decks and all that stuff. But then that's in the sightline of their main house. It feels to us as though we're taking this, originally a garage and now an apartment on top of the garage is proposed. And who knows if the next step is going to be a roof deck on the rental property, or I thought it was going to be part of the home. Now, I believe someone suggested it may become a rental property. And then are we going to come back later and want a roof deck on top of the rental property? And that's in back of our house, of these historic houses. I would question if they wanted all this. It maybe it could have been behind the main house so that they're staring at this big structure. And again, we, I have to go back, the original twenty, twenty-six ten seminary home, there was quite a wide berth between that, I think it was a three flat or whatever, in our backyard. It wasn't current, the current structure.
The butts are back.
Yeah, they took, I mean, and it was agreed to, I'm not complaining. It was agreed that they would take down our fence, back that north fence. And that's, that's a wall now, that's this kind of brick wall. So we understood that. So there, so we lost that space. Okay, fine, agreed. But then this other, it's the, it's the, I think it's just going to really eleven hundred and eleven oh two, I believe these homes were built in the eighteen eighties. And I just think it would be very sad to have this monstrosity structure behind the homes. And again, does it, does anybody know who owns eleven oh two Wrightwood? Cause I, I can't believe they're not here.
You know, um, maybe, I, I don't think anybody knows who the, who owns those two properties, but
Well, the one, we own eleven hundred, we own eleven hundred.
So eleven oh two. I, I don't think we have the answer to that, but Counselor Fatikas, have, were there any conversations with the neighbors about the variation?
So we, we circulated our notice letter to the property owners within a hundred feet. I believe we did receive a call from Mr. Nicewick earlier in the process. There were no other responses. Under Alderman Smith's process, she did ask that we reach out to the Wrightwood Neighbors. That process stalled when she transitioned and the new alderman came to be. It's my understanding is Taylor testified that Wrightwood did re-review the projects at, at the request of Alderman Knudsen and came to the same position of no objection based on the, the L-shaped position. So our review process was notifying the property owners within a hundred feet and then working with the local community organization to get to this point.
Okay, any other questions of either the, the applicant or the alderman?
This, this is Commissioner Esposito again. Was this always a single lot?
Who are you, who are you asking?
The applicant or his.
What lot is that?
I don't know.
Lot, has it always been a? Lot, has it always been a single tax ID lot?
No, I, I don't believe it has. I believe it was also, it was originally two separate lots. I think that the, uh, neighbors at eleven hundred said that this may have even been a three unit building, the one that's on seminary. So as best I know, they are, they, they were originally separate lots. The best I know as of twenty eighteen, they were treated as one L shaped lot. I, I, I don't know the history prior to that because I, I wasn't involved in the.
We could tell you, yeah, they were separate lots.
They were sep- when was, when was twenty six ten seminary, um, demolished? I don't think it was way back in twenty eighteen.
So Scott or Nick, if you wanna confirm.
Um, I don't have the exact dates, but it was, um, combined later. I think the house was, uh, designed and then. This other lot became available and presented this opportunity.
Okay. Okay, so the applicant obtained the other lot and spiked it to his property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay, so as we look right here, we, we're, what is the property to the right?
That, that's the old apartment building that was there? That's what they replaced with the garage and, uh.
No, on the right, so it might be blue.
Uh, that's across the alley, I mean?
Yes, is that neighbor, has that neighbor been contacted?
The neighbor received notice. We've had absolutely no, um, there's been no outreach to our office from, from that neighbor.
Okay.
Can I ask what, 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 uh, address are you talking about? What house in blue?
This one here.
Out of the image.
Twenty six fourteen, maybe twenty six fourteen?
Across the alley from the.
Okay, from the garage, okay.
It was new garage, yeah.
Right.
I, I, I can speak to the neighbor across the alley. They did reach out to me and I met with them onsite and explained the project and, um, they had no objections, which is. Why we're not here in front of them today.
Okay, you don't know, okay.
Nick, you, you reached out to everyone that you're supposed to reach out to, right? I know you did. I just. Earlier in the day, this came up as well. There is a procedure that you have to do. You know, cause I know that some people asked, did you reach out to next door? You, you have to. I mean, that's the procedure, right? So. And I know you're very good at this, so I know you've reached out to everyone you're supposed to reach out to, yes?
So, yes, we have, I wanna make sure the record is absolutely clear. We have a legal requirement to send notices out. We also, working under Alderman Smith, again predecessor Alderman, working under Alderman Smith, we had. A absolute requirement to reach out to the Wrightwood Neighbors Association as part of the program. There was a bit of a delay because of the change in, in Aldermanic seat, but as recent as last week. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe earlier this week, uh, Wrightwood Neighbors. Re-reviewed the project and provided the alderman with a letter of no opposition.
Can I just clarify, when you met with the people in the blue house, which I think is twenty six fourteen. Was that about the original garage or was that about the garage plus? The apartment possible rental property on top?
We, we, we were, our, our office was contacted by them when they received the notice that Nick is talking about. And they asked to meet with us onsite to discuss the project and explain it to them.
And that, that was including the, um, the second floor on top of the garage. If I, I don't know if I may add something. I mean, this, the house that did exist on this site was. Rather dilapidated and, um, you know, didn't meet, you know, current zoning. Standards. And was kind of a, a strange, you know, house to be in the back of. These other, you know, the, the lot in front was split up with a fifty foot lot. You know, in the back, that was kind of an odd lot. So it was a very odd building and it was sort of in the back of the other lot, so.
Right, but there was a ten, there was at least a ten foot. Setback and you can see that in those other photos, it's, it's setback from the fence. See, there's a big tet, set, setback there. That's gone now. Now the garage abuts the, that fence.
Counselor Fat- Fatikas, do you know what the calendar number was of the, of the prior, uh, variation?
I do, uh, it was. Five nine seven, I'm sorry, five seven nine. Eighteen Z. And we did provide a copy of the, uh, resolution with our findings of facts submitted.
Um, and. Did, um. Is there any other, uh. Place on the, on the property where this addition could be built?
I, I think Chairman, it's a tough question because I think anything's possible. I think that. You know, what we tried to do was design it so that we were working with existing foundations and building walls. One of the points that was raised in the alderman's letters, I, I believe also with Wrightwood neighbors. Was maintaining some level of open space, which is shown on the, the site plan that's on the screen right now. Um, so could a, could a unit be? Added, maybe where the word shows is white and not gray? Yes, would that also require a variation? Absolutely, because we're on an L shaped lot. And again, we're, I, I wanna make sure this point's clear. While the lots at some point in recent history were separate. As of twenty eighteen, when we obtained our permit for the construction of the home with the attached garage, it became an L shaped lot. And that's something that we, w- w- we're trying to work now with. An L shaped lot that again, obviously presents some hardships when trying to design on what's typically a rectangular lot.
And maybe, maybe the architect can, can explain that for me, e- exactly what the hardships are with this L shaped lot.
Well, the hardship is created because the setbacks on an L shaped lot would cut, basically make the. Entire back half. Unbuildable. So where the garage is right now, because that's an attached garage, that would be. We, it would be un, unbuildable because there would be a, like a thirty or whatever the setback would be required, you know, in a. Standard hundred and I think this is a hundred and twenty five foot long lot. So you'd have your standard setbacks, which would not allow this garage to be built. Um, if it, as it is attached. So that's the hardship, the main hardship is that. This, because the lot is L shaped, the rear. Setback requirement of the longer lot.
And Chairman, I, I, if I can just kind of piggyback that.
Um, yeah.
Every, everything, I, I just wanna reinforce what, uh, Mr. Fortman said. The, if the board were to say there wasn't a hardship, everything. From the rear of our principal building that fronts on Wrightwood, that portion of the lot from the thirty seven. Point three four mark to the rear property line would all be unbuildable. And I think the, the, the plans show that dashed line at the rear of the home. If you can see right, right around that connection with the stairs. If it's almost the middle of the page or middle of the screen. Everything to the right would not be allowed. And again, I wanna be clear, the gray hash is, is the footprint of what is permitted. Under the current building run. So we're just trying to add on to what's already been established as. The, the development lot or the, the, the building footprint for the structure.
Well, I would ask, and that's obviously, there's beautiful buildings on Brightwood. But what about these two original eleven hundred and eleven oh two? You know, they're just being, uh. Absorbed into this stuff and what about, doesn't anybody wanna have some kind of original? Buildings that, you know, represent any history of the neighborhood?
Right, I mean, these are eighteen eighty red brick. Lockups, you know, very, they're on the historic, you know, list here for being some of the most preserved. Important houses in the neighborhood.
Right, what about some of the variety and the architecture of the neighborhood? Again. We were, we understood the garage, so I just, you know, we get it. Don't wanna. Say nobody can have a garage, got it. But this next step to have a towering. You know, second story. And I, and I have, I did not understand until this beginning that that could possibly turn into a rental. Towering over our backyard. It is just, um, well, it's just very worrisome and the whole, the whole neighborhood can't be. Mansions, I don't think, is that the strategy we're trying to go with? Like, nothing original?
Okay, um, is there, uh, a- a- anything, a- a- anything further from the objectors? Before we go to, uh, closing by the applicant?
Uh, I would just ask to reconsider. We were very, you know, the garage is fine, that we got it. But, uh, you know. I, I, I just would ask to please reconsider.
This is Commissioner Toyah. I just wanna, uh, answer your one question. Obviously, we're a zoning board, so we're here for zoning decisions. What you were just mentioning would be a landmark. And that's something you should bring up with your neighbors, the Wrightwood neighbors, the alderman, as you see the alderman's, uh. Staffer is, uh, shaking his head, uh, Taylor is. So that would be landmarks. We are zoning. I just wanna. Educate you as you go forward.
But, and that's, that's fine.
Alright, thanks.
Right, but in the zoning discussions, you seem to have asked, as we sat there and listened today. Whether the type of dwelling is compatible with the scale of the original houses in the area. You seem to always ask that question.
No, that is, that is absolutely true. And we also listen to what the alderman's office has to say and the neighborhood groups has to say too. What I'm hearing is Wrightwood neighbors is not against this and the alderman's not, all, is not against this. But we also wanna hear what you have to say too, as I always say, this is the people's board, but we always, I always, I would only speak for myself. I always wanna hear what the neighborhood group has to say, if it's a business, a business group has to say, what the alderman has to say. And obviously what the neighbors have to say, but I do weigh up what the, the neighborhood association and the alderman I have to say as well.
Alright, thank you.
I would, if I may, I would like to also add, just before we close out on this discussion. Um, thank you for bringing up the nuance of, that's a landmark discussion with regards to historic preservation and character. I appreciate that. These buildings are not orange rated on the historic survey or part of any landmark designation, just so we're clear. Um, and I would also like to be clear that I did not receive a formal letter of statement of position from Wrightwood Neighbors in conclusion. I received an email from Wrightwood Neighbors that said, we would like to hear from the neighbor at eleven oh two. Before we issued any formal statement opposing or not. So that was left somewhat open ended. We left no opposition to let the zoning board judge this on its own merits. We do not have an objection to the principal subject matter of this request.
Well, we would like to talk to the Wrightwood Neighbors Association, definitely, and we're at eleven hundred. We're also impacted.
And, and for the record, I did also personally attempt to contact the neighbor at eleven oh two and was not able to.
And thank you, appreciate that, appreciate that.
Okay, alright, I wanna, uh, thank, uh, everyone for coming, um, Counselor Fatikas, uh. You can do a brief closing. We've, we have a lot on this.
No, I appreciate that. I, I just wanna make sure four points are clear on closing. The first is, um, the objector's initial comment was regarding light and air ventilation between the properties. I wanna point out for the record that our properties to the north of the subject of the neighbor, um, that's objecting. That's significant because being in the northern hemisphere, sun rising in the east, setting in the west. We're not casting shadow shade on their property. They're actually sh- sh- casting shadow toward us. We're not complaining about that, but I want the board to be clear that because we're positioned in north. That's a, a significant feature component of, uh, responding to that, uh, objection. Second, the proposed, what would be a two story structure. Again, would replace what was a three story structure. We're going from thirty two feet down to twenty one feet. Naturally, that should have less of an impact, simply because it's not as tall as the building that used to sit on that side of the property. The third point I'd like to make is, even with our proposed second floor addition on the seminary side of the property. There will still be over twenty four feet of space between the rear of the buildings at eleven hundred. And eleven oh two Wrightwood and our, what we're calling our, our north, um, that north shared lot line. Twenty four feet of space that's uninterrupted. And then lastly, I think is a significant point that was raised regarding scale. For the last hundred years, there's been at least a two or three story building on the seminary side of the property. We believe that a one story garage, although it served the needs of what we wanted in two thousand and eighteen. Was probably the only garage on that side of the street that didn't have a structure above. We went through extensive review to come up with a design that gave the appearance of a residential building. That would effectively replace a residential building. And maintain a two and three story scale on the seminary frontage. For those reasons, we believe that there is in fact a hardship. And that all of the criteria for approval are being met specifically with this design. Thank you.
Uh, I, I have two points slash questions. Is the twenty four feet you're talking about the space? That's, that's our backyard. Are we talking about the same thing? That this twenty four.
Do you want me to answer? I don't know how you want me to handle that. I, I, it, it is the backyard. It's what's, it's the dimension showing on the survey that was submitted with. Uh, our application and our findings.
Okay, so that's what, that twenty four feet is called our backyard. And I know there was a structure at twenty six ten, but it was not flush against our backyard. There was a space between the end of our backyard. And the existing structure. What we have now is that wall of the garage on the south side. Is, we, it is now called our back fence. So there's, there's two different, I just wanna clarify that there's some differences. I understand what you're saying, but I just wanna. Put that out there.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, everyone, for, uh, coming here today and, and thank you to the applicant, to the objector. To Tyler, Taylor Ness. I appreciate everybody's input. We are going to take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we're gonna call a short recess. Uh, we're gonna reconvene, uh, at five o'clock. I move that we, uh, take a recess until five o'clock. Um, Commissioner Toyah, seconds, Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah? Commissioner Toyah? Alright, well, I vote yes, and that's, that's, that's enough. So, uh, we are, uh, in recess until five o'clock. Alright, well, I vote yes, and that's, that's, that's enough. So uh, we are uh, in recess until five o'clock. Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
And Commissioner Toya?
Yes, I'm unmuted this time. Sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. I vote yes as well. We are back. Uh, and next up is calendar numbers. Three sixty-six dash twenty-two dash Z, three sixty-seven dash twenty-two dash Z, three sixty-eight dash twenty-two dash Z. Three sixty-nine dash twenty-two dash Z and three seventy dash twenty-two dash Z. This is uh, forty-five, forty-three South Ellis. We are still with Counselor Fatikas. If you're watching the live stream, you need to, you need to stop watching the live stream because we'll get audio interference. Let's see here. It's like we have your. I've got two witnesses for this one. Counselor, is that correct?
Um, Jasek and Alexander.
Yes. Okay, great. Um, could uh, Jasek, could you state your name and address? Oh. Also, if there's any objectors or supporters, uh, please raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. Uh, let's start with you, Jasek. Uh, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Yancey O'Hatchick. I'm staying on twenty-four oh four, oh three line, Park Ridge.
Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, are, are you watching the live stream right now? Cause when you speak, we're getting feedback.
Okay, I can go with that.
Oh, you're in the same room. That's, that's the problem. Yeah, you need to go into different rooms. Okay, and uh, Alex, uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Alexander Paulfield, thirty-three thirty, Dungey Road, Sweet N One, Northbrook, Illinois.
Your, your sound is muffled.
Can you hear me now?
It's a little better, yeah. Um, could you, could you restate your name and address, please?
Alexander Paulfield, thirty-three thirty, Dungey Road, Sweet N One, Northbrook, Illinois, six hundred sixty-two.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Um, if there are any objectors or supporters, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. But Counselor Fatikas, I'm not seeing any. No one has raised their hand, so you are free to do the short form on this one.
Alright, perfect. Uh, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, X Bud LLC. Again, the applicant does own the property at forty-five, forty-three South Ellis Avenue. The subject lot measures thirty-three, thirty-five feet wide by a hundred and sixty-four feet deep, and it's currently vacant and unimproved. The, it's also important to note that the subject property is located within the boundaries of the North Kenwood Multiple Resource Landmark District. And that designation includes the rest of the east side of South Ellis Avenue. So all of our residential neighbors are part of the same historic district. And Chairman, we submitted several photos of the block showing the historic buildings that frankly, our proposal is attempting to match. The applicant is proposing to develop the subject property with the new three-story, six-unit residential building. In order to permit the building and fit within the context of the historic district. The applicant is seeking variations to reduce the minimum lot area for six units. Reduce the number of off-street parking spaces from six to five. Reduce the combined side setback total, relocate the rear and open space. And increase the allowable building height to forty-one point oh eight feet. Um, so the other, I think there are five separate um, call numbers, a lot of relief. And again, it's intended to allow us to match the historic uh, makeup or context of this uh, block on, on South Ellis. Uh, both witnesses have been sworn in and, and I can call Jasek as my first witness.
Please do.
Jasek, you're the manager of the applicant, X Bud LLC, is that right?
Yes.
And again, that property owns fifty, uh, forty-five, forty-three South Ellis Avenue?
Uh, Jasek, you froze.
Okay, I said yes, that's correct.
You may, you may wanna turn your video off. Uh, it may make it, um, may prevent you from freezing up.
It's better?
Alright, well, well, yeah, let's, why don't you try and ask another question, Counselor, and, and, and we'll.
Okay, and, and Jasek, your plan is to develop the currently vacant lot with a new six-unit uh, residential building, is that right?
That's correct.
And again, as I stated in the introduction, your plan is to try and match the context of the historic block. Uh, that the subject property is located on, right?
That's correct.
And it's your uh, understanding that again, we uh, prepared witness statements um, in support of your application today?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be contained in the statements we provided, is that right?
That's right.
Great. Um, Alex, um, again, you're the project architect on this uh, on this project?
Yes.
And you designed the six uh, unit residential building for the property, is that right?
Yes.
And in terms of a hardship, is it your professional opinion that the unique lot dimensions and the corresponding lot area to- total. Together with the historic character and pattern of development within this North Kenwood Historic District. Uh, create the hardships that the variations are intended to overcome, is that right?
That's correct.
And again, our front design, and I, I don't see it up on the screen right now, but our front elevation. Is uh, Masonry stone and intended to have more of a traditional uh, design element. To match our neighbors on either side of the, the lot, is that right?
Correct, it's limestone facade, yes.
So limestone facade, and then uh, Alex, is it also true that uh, the rest of the buildings on our block. Are essentially in that three, three and a half story height dimension, and that they all span the widths of their respective lots?
Correct.
So again, we're, we're.
Three and a half stories side by side.
Exactly, okay. Um, Alex, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. The, the only thing that I would note before I close, Chairman, is that uh, this project has been reviewed by uh, Alderman Sophia King. As well as the Landmarks Department. Uh, we made reference to those in the findings of that, but I wanted to make sure that the board members were all aware. Uh, because of our location in the North Kenwood Historic District, there was an additional round of review for the proposal.
Alright, thank you. Um, I'm just, I'm. Trying to figure out, uh, the exhibit should be up on the screen. Um, hopefully, we can get that going. Uh, here we go. Okay, um, questions from the board? You know, one, one thing that maybe you could just uh, go through with um, with, with the applicant. Uh, could you just explain the, the reasonable return analysis to me?
Sure, um, hold on one second, sir. Jasek, is, is part of our application, is it true that you uh, completed an economic analysis? For the costs, the anticipated costs and the projected um, income from the project?
Yes.
And again, one of the issues that came up is, if we were limited to five residential units. We, our concern would be that we would only, we, we would have one unit that would basically be double the size of the four units below, is that right?
That's right.
And that would, unfortunately, that would raise the price per square foot for that fifth unit beyond the market conditions in the subject area, is that right?
That's right.
So the alternative was to attempt to get a, a typical two, two units per floor floor plate. And provide what we believe are in-market, uh, in-demand units, is that right?
That's right.
And then lastly, although it, it works actually a little bit against us. Because we can't uh, provide the additional parking space, we are asking for a parking space reduction, is that right?
That's correct.
And the reason we are asking for that parking space reduction is because our building was essentially. Designed to align with the rears of our neighboring buildings, is that right?
Correct.
So we had a limited amount of space at the rear of the property to work. And it was either make our building shorter or give up the parking space and pursue that as part of the variation application.
That's correct.
And, and to put it another way, it's actually a little bit of a concession because. The, having the parking space would probably help us make a little bit more money on the project from a value standpoint, is that right?
That's right.
Thank you. Chairman, I hope that touched on the issues. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Oh, that was helpful. Uh, a- any other questions from the board? We have what we need. We're gonna take it under advisement.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alright, next up. Is three seventy-one dash twenty-two dash Z. This is fifty-nine forty North Sheridan. If you are here in support or objection, please uh, raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Alright, I can see we have. Angela and William, those are your witnesses for this one? Okay, Angela, could you state your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Angela Volavani. I live at eighteen twenty-three Grant Street in Evanston, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, and William, uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Uh, yes, my name is William Berry. My address is two-two-seven West Menominee Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one four.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And. We, I'm not seeing any objectors on this one, Counselor Fatikas, so you are free to do the short form.
Thank you, sir. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Creative Co-Working LLC. The applicant is gonna be leasing the subject property at fifty-nine forty North Sheridan Road. The property is actually home to this, the Colvin House, a historic building that dates back to nineteen oh nine. The applicant is proposing to use the building for a variety of commercial uses. Including sometimes as a banquet hall and private event space. In order to properly license the use, the applicant is required to obtain a public place of amusement license. The issue is that the subject property is located immediately across the street within one hundred and twenty-five feet. Of a residential RS-one zoning district. Um, so we're here seeking a variation pursuant to the requirement of the zoning ordinance. Uh, I have my two witnesses again, Angela and Barry and, uh, William, and I will start by asking Angela. Um, you are the manager of the applicant Creative Co-Working LLC?
Yes, I am.
And again, you'll be the sole tenant of the Colvin House located at fifty-nine forty North Sheridan Road, is that right?
Yes.
As I stated, you're looking to uh, broaden the commercial uses that are available to you at the property?
Yes.
And um, in order to properly license the space for private rentals or banquet facilities. Uh, you're required to obtain a public place of amusement license, is that right?
Correct.
And Angela, is it your understanding that um, my office prepared witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, William, you are the project architect uh, on, on this project?
Yes.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And again, um, with respect to the public place of amusement license. The uh, only issue uh, in terms of hardship is our lot's physical proximity. To the neighboring RS-one lot across Sheridan Road to the east, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Otherwise, it's your understanding, based on our P-one-one zoning today, we'd actually be eligible for the PPA license without a variation.
Yes, that's correct.
And to be clear, uh, we. And to be clear, uh, while we're looking to broaden the uses that are available at the property, we're not proposing any type of structural changes or expansions of the historic building, is that right?
Yes.
And uh, William, is it your understanding as well that we filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
And uh, Chairman, before I conclude, I did want to point out that uh, Alderman Osterman had sent a letter of support. I think Dan Luna had been on the line, but I think he dropped off a little while ago. We also obtained letters of support from the Edge of Water Chamber of Commerce and the ASCO Association of Condominium Owners, um, there was a lengthy review process uh, as part of this application, as well as a companion zoning change application, so we've been working at it for the better part of six months and, and we're happy to be here today. Any questions you have about our program, please, uh, we, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, uh, any questions from the board?
Uh, this is Commissioner Esposito, uh, could the applicant briefly describe the sorts of events uh, that you plan to host?
Sure, hi, um, yeah, so um, when I you, I came before this, this board years ago, six years ago, we switched from residential to commercial use with the idea of um, you know, coworking and, and small events and um, the thing that came up recently that is calling us to get a PPA was ticketed events, we were doing some small concerts um, like jazz trios and such, and um, we need to do a ticketed event, we would need a PPA rather, rather than um, you know, only being able to take donations for the band, we would like to be able to do some small ticketed events and um, and then continue with, you know, just the things that are allowable under a B-one-one, but are not uh, without, you know, we would need the PPA, which is why we were asking for this variation.
And Commissioner, again, if I can piggyback, one of the issues that's come up, it's a little bit of a gray area, but if somebody were to rent the uh, event space for a, a wedding or a party, and they had live music, even though you're not necessarily paying the, the performers for that specific event, there are issues with whether or not the, the art, for the performance can be had onsite, so the PPA gives us that flexibility and frankly, the coverage from a licensing side, so that the activities that occur are all within code.
Terrific, but such a beautiful house, um, one other question, how will you handle uh, alcohol service?
Yeah, we, any alcohol is always handled by a licensed caterer, you know, we've, we are very careful to partner with people who are able to do such things, I am not personally selling any alcohol.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, I think we have what we need, we're gonna take this matter under advisement.
Thanks very much.
Okay, next up is three seventy-two dash twenty-two dash S, this is nineteen-ten North California. If you are here in support or objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. See here. Can see we've got uh, Bud Kerwin and we have Natalie Maxwell.
Uh, Chairman, this is a special use application, I had uh, registered Radu Alexa as one of our witnesses. It's probably not needed unless there's a question about architecture or design. Um, it's not a variation case, so we're only speaking to special use standards, and I believe Mr. Kerwin can do that.
Okay, great, um, let me get your uh, witness sworn, uh, Natalie, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Natalie Maxwell, my address is nine fifteen North Fairfield, Chicago, Illinois, six oh-six-two-two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, and uh, Bud Kerwin has already been sworn and his expertise has been recognized. I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for three seventy-two dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed one-story, single-family residence, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated June fourteen, twenty-twenty-two, prepared by Andrew R. Wang, Licensed Architect. Uh, Counselor Fatikas, no objectors have raised their hand, you are free to do the short form.
Thank you again, Chairman, uh, Nick Fatikas, for the record, um, here on behalf of the applicant Natalie Maxwell. Natalie owns the subject property at nineteen-ten North California Avenue. The site itself measures thirty-one-point-five-eight, five-eight feet wide by a hundred feet deep, and it's currently improved with a two-story residential building. Natalie is proposing to take down the existing building and develop the property with the new single-story, single-family home. Uh, the, the proposed home would have an attic as well as a basement. In order to re-establish the residential uses below the second floor of the proposed building, the applicant is required to obtain a special use because the subject property is located in a B-three-dash-one zoning district. Uh, again, I have two witnesses available, uh, Natalie Maxwell, the property owner and applicant, and our MAI Appraiser, Mr. Kerwin, and I can go right into my first questions of Natalie, um, if that's alright.
Yes.
Natalie, again, you own the subject property at nineteen-ten North California Avenue?
Yes.
And uh, you're, the current conditions of the building um, are, are not great, and your plan is to take it down and redevelop the property with the new single-story, single-family home, is that right?
Yes.
And in order to do that, it's your understanding that special use is required because there will be residential uses below the second floor, effectively the attic of the proposed home, is that right?
Yes.
Um, and Natalie, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you, um, Mr. Kerwin, um, you're, the scope of your assignment in this case was um, to determine whether the requested special use met the criteria for special use approval uh, as outlined by the code, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you physically inspected the subject property in the surrounding area?
Yes, I have.
And is it true that uh, predominantly, the nineteen-hundred block, both, both sides of the street are residential, ground-floor residential in nature, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, I, I counted about thirty properties on both sides, and so more than seventy-three percent are all residential uses at the ground-floor level, the remaining at the north and south end are small commercials, the spaces with residential units on the, the upper floors. I, I might add that the subject property has been about a hundred and forty-three years of age, and it was as a two-flat, so it's had a residential use there for more than a hundred years.
Great, Bud, and it's your, um, you did prepare a written report summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case?
Yes, I did, and I included photographs of all of these properties I referenced in my report as well.
And Bud, it's your understanding that I submitted a copy of that written report to the board already, is that right?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report, is that right?
Yes, it would be.
Great, thank you, Chairman, uh, it, that concludes our abbreviated presentation. Any other uh, questions you or the board members have, we'd be happy to answer now.
Questions from the board?
Uh, this is Commissioner Esposito, quick question, uh, may I ask who the architect of the, of this, of the new houses?
So Andrew Wang is the stamp professional, and then Dan Alexa uh, was the um, was intending to testify, unfortunately, he's, he's not on right now.
I apologize, I made it.
He's on.
You made it, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We have what we need, we're gonna take it under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, and that is the last one with Counselor Fatikas for the day. So we are now moving on to three seventy-three dash twenty-two dash S. This is thirty-two thirty-four North Central. If you are here in objection or support, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Okay, I can see we've got Kareem. Okay, we've got Counselor Colepack.
There we are.
Okay, great, um. Uh, so I've got uh, A- Angela Karlak and, and Kareem Musawir as your uh, witnesses, Counselor Colepack?
That's correct.
Okay, great, um, Angela, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Angela Karlak, my address is eight-five-four-one West Gregory Street, apartment two north, Chicago, Illinois, six zero-six-five-six.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Kareem, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Kareem Musawir, and at two-two-one North LaSalle Street in Chicago. I'm, we're a land use and zoning consultant.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. Um, alright, let me read the uh, department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number three seventy-three dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. Um, and Counselor Colepack, we do not have any objectors here, no one has raised their hand in objection. So I would ask that you do the short form, please.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Angela, you are the President of Angels Club Corporation, the applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
Angela, uh, when would your hours of operation be here? What hours are you gonna be?
Uh, since eight I M to, um, since, since ten I M to eight P M.
And that is Monday through Saturday, what days?
Uh, it's holidays.
Are you gonna be open Sunday?
Yes.
You're gonna be open at the same hours, is that correct?
Correct.
How many chairs will you have?
Uh, six to seven manicure station and three to four pedicure station.
No further questions, my client. I would like to uh, acknowledge Mr. Musawir as an expert qualified to testify at this proceeding.
Oh, yeah, y- yes, uh, his, we recognize his expertise based on many past appearances.
Thank you. And Mr. Musawir, would you please state your name and address?
Yes, sir, Kareem Musawir at two-twenty-one North LaSalle Street in Chicago.
What was your scope of assignment in this case?
To visit the site and the area surrounding the site to determine whether the proposed special use would meet the criteria required for the approval of the zoning board.
You actually physically went and inspected that property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you reviewed the other properties in the neighborhood, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're, in your opinion, um, will this meet the criteria and set forth for a special use according to the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Musawir, you uh, have presented the findings of fact and the affidavit, if you were called on to testify further, you testified in substantial compliance of that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And uh, Mr. Chairman, just going back to uh, Ms. Karlak, Ms. Karlak, we prepared a witness statement for you, and if you were going to testify further, you testified in substantial compliance with that statement, is that correct?
Yes.
No further questions, we stand to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions from the board? I think we have what we need, we're gonna take this under advisement.
Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful evening, stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is three seventy-four dash twenty-two dash S. This is twenty-nine-hundred West Belmont. See, we got Ron Cain. If there are any uh, supporters or objectors, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. You got Terrence O'Brien. Let's see here. Counselor uh, Leach, um, do you, John Ortenzio as well?
Yes, he, he should be on.
Okay. Oh, yes, uh, he just, he's, he's just been promoted. Um, alright, let me start, I'll start swearing in your witnesses, uh, let's start with Ron. Ron, can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Ron Cain, uh, C-A-I-N, twenty-nine-hundred West Belmont, Chicago, six-zero-six-one-eight.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, John Ortenzio, can you state your name and address, please?
John Dortenzio, our offices are located at four-twelve South Well Street, second floor, Chicago, Illinois, six-zero-six-zero-seven.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, and uh, Terrence O'Brien has already been sworn in today and his expertise has been recognized.
Uh, thank you.
No objectors have raised their hand, so you uh, can do the short form.
I will do that, certainly, Mr. Chairman, I'll just give a short statement and then uh, enter their uh, their affidavits.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Chris Leach, I'm an attorney with the Law Offices of Ackerman LLP, located at seventy-one South Wacker Drive. I'm appearing in the afternoon on behalf of the applicant Use Acquisitions LLC in connection with the application seeking a special use to establish a rooftop outdoor patio for the property located at twenty-nine-hundred West Belmont Avenue and thirty-two-hundred through thirty-two-ten North Francisco Avenue, which is located within the B-three-dash-three Community Shopping District. Before getting into the details of the application, uh, well, I was gonna introduce my witnesses, but we've already done that. Uh, the subject site is located in the thirty-third Ward on the northwest corner of Belmont Avenue and Francisco Avenue. The subject site is three thousand one-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet in size and improved with a three-story mixed-use building with a restaurant on the ground floor, office space on the second floor, and a residential unit on the third floor. The applicant obtained a type-one zoning amendment from the C-one-dash-one Neighborhood Commercial District to the B-three-three Community Shopping District to allow an addition onto the rear of the existing mixed-use three-story building to add a new exit stairway, ADA bathrooms for the ground-floor restaurant, a one-story addition to the rear of the restaurant, adding additional indoor seating, and is now seeking a special use to permit a rooftop patio on top of the one-story addition uh, to add additional outdoor seating. The restaurant business is very competitive and the applicant seeks the ability to compete more effectively by being able to offer more outdoor seating for their patrons. The applicant worked with Alderman, or older woman, Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez's office, going through the older woman's community process of sending out letters in English and in Spanish to the community informing uh, them of the special use and having the proposed special use reviewed by the Evendale Neighborhood Association to obtain the support of the older woman and of the community. All, the alderman has uh, submitted a letter of support for the proposed uh, special use. Um, at this time, I'll call Mr. Ron Cain.
Counselor, uh, but I'm sorry, before you do that, I forgot to read the recommendation.
That's right.
Uh, it, it's happening, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm maybe betting five hundred on reading these, uh, at the right, at the beginning. But uh, here, let me, let me get it out, uh, this is the uh, Department of Planning and Development's recommendation for three seventy-four dash twenty-two dash S. Uh, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed rooftop patio in conjunction with the restaurant, Kuma's Corner, which is located on the first- which is located on the first floor of an existing three-story mixed-use building, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant Use Acquisition LLC and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated February fourth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by DXU Architects.
Okay. Mr. Cain, could you please state your, your name for the record?
Ron Cain.
And you are the owner and manager of the applicant Use Acquisitions LLC and also the operator and owner of Kuma's Corner Restaurant, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And we prepared an affidavit with your testimony in this case and submitted it to the zoning board of appeals, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And if you were to testify today, would you testify in substantial, substantial conformance with that affidavit?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Mr. Ortenzio, could you please state your name for the record, please?
John Dortenzio.
And John, you are the project architect for this project, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we also prepared an affidavit for your review and signature in connection with this case, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And if you were called to, were called to testify today, you would testify in substantial conformance with that affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Brien, could you please state your name for the record? Yeah, you're muted, Terry.
I apologize. Terrence O'Brien, all passively be R I D N, professional real estate appraiser.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, you have, you reviewed the subject property and prepared a report, is that correct?
Yes, several times on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and then this past Wednesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
And your report has been submitted to the board, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And your report details how this proposed special use would conform with all the criteria for the granting of the special use, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, could you please summarize it quickly for the board?
Well, this, the subject property is located at the corner of Belmont and Francisco. It's been described and accurately as a three-story mixed-use structure. First floor is utilized for a restaurant. At the rear of the restaurant currently, there is an outdoor patio, however, the applicant wishes to expand the size of the building. Therefore, he wants to put a rooftop patio on the expansion at the rear of the existing structure. I would note immediately to the west is a three- and four-story type apartment mixed-use structure. But I also want to note, and I think it's very important, that this, that wall on that adjoining building is all brick. There is no windows that would overlook the patio or the rooftop patio. Therefore, you are probably not going to have any or substantial noise that would then transmit into the building next door. The buildings along Belmont Avenue are primarily business and commercial in nature. I'd point out that the north of the subject is a paved alley. North of that, there were originally residential, I think was a single-family home, but currently is being, was torn down and now being developed with a three-story multifamily structure. I have looked at all the criteria and reviewed it, in my opinion. I believe the proposed special use does fulfill all the criteria set forth in the ordinance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That's all the questions I have for my witnesses. We stand ready to answer any questions that the board may have and ask for your favorable recommendation. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board? I'm not hearing any questions, so we are going to take this matter under advisement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to take a matter, we need to take a matter out of order. That matter is number four oh three dash twenty-two dash S. That is the calendar number we're going to call right now, four oh three dash twenty-two dash S. This is thirty-five forty-five North Kedzie. If you are here in support or objection for four oh three dash twenty-two dash S, this is again thirty-five forty-five North Kedzie, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Okay, I can see we've got Counselor Micus here. Got a, a long list of witnesses for this one. I've got ten witnesses on here. Are you, are you planning on calling all ten, Counselor?
Nine.
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 Which one are you not intending to call?
Ashley Ben Newman.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
All right, let me make sure we've, we've got, I can see we've got Mike Wallen. Luwai Abuna. Just confirming, we've got all your witnesses here. Do we have Corey Henderson?
Let me text him.
Cody Henderson, he's raising his hand right now. Got you. How about Stuart Johnson? Oh, okay, I think he just waved his hand.
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And let's see, did his Corey, oh, yeah, now, we got Cody now as well. All right, I'm going to go through all your witnesses and get them sworn in.
Okay.
And then I'll read the department's recommendation and then you can begin. Okay, Jose, could you state your name and address, please?
Jose Luis Lopez, forty-six twenty-one West Hubert, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three nine.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Mitchell, can you state your name and address, please?
Mitchell Zabaduk, twenty-eight forty-four Floral Drive, Northbrook, Illinois, six double oh six two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Cody, could you state your name and address, please? Did we lose Cody?
Yeah, he's saying he doesn't have audio now.
Oh, okay. All right, well, while he tries to get back in, I'll swear in the others. April, could you state your name and address, please?
April Guzman, one oh one Laura K. Drive, Suite one oh one, O'Fallon, Missouri, six three three six six.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ken, could you state your name and address, please? Oh, you're on mute, Ken.
Sorry, Kenneth Boucher, three six one Cromway Road in Lamont, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Stuart? Can you state your name and address, please?
Stuart Johnson, nine nine two two East Thunderbolt Avenue in Mesa, Arizona.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Michael Wallen, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Michael Wallen. My address, business address is five Rivera Drive in Northbrook, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, sir.
And George, I think we've already seen you today and recognized your expertise, is that correct?
That's correct, and I should already be sworn in.
Yes, okay, great, yeah, you've been sworn in and your expertise has been recognized. And then Luwai, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Luwai Abuna, ninety-five seventy-five West Higgins Road in Rosemont, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And I can see we've got Cody back. Can you state your name and address, please?
Cody Henderson, one two two zero nine Big Ben Road, St. Louis, Missouri.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, for the record here, because we are taking this one out of order, this is four oh three dash twenty-two dash S. This is thirty-five forty-five North Kedzie. If you are here in objection or support, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. I am going to read the Department of Planning's recommendation. It's a recommendation for four oh three dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Green Star. Two, all onsite customer queuing occurs within the building. Three, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site and landscape plan dated October thirteen, twenty twenty-two, and the demolition and floor plan dated September ninth, twenty twenty-two, all prepared by Filer S Architects. Counselor Micus, no objectors have raised their hand and we have reviewed the, everything that's been submitted for this matter, so you can do the short form.
Great, thank you very much. And again, thank you for accommodating our kind of movement in the, in the agenda. So good afternoon, Chairman Sanchez and members of the board. For the record, my name is Sylvia Micus. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Taps, DeTinias and Hollister, located at one 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 East Wacker Drive in Chicago, Illinois. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant Green Star. Green Star plans to locate and establish its proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary within the existing one-story building located at thirty-five forty-five North Kedzie Avenue. I also want to point out that the applicant plans to also utilize the adjacent triangular parcel located directly to the south of the existing building as a secure delivery area. The applicant will provide thirteen parking spaces located within the adjacent parking area at thirty-one forty-five West Addison Street for use by applicant's customers. As a subject property is located within a C one one district, a special use is required and is for this reason that the applicant is before the board today. Again, we will have nine witnesses testifying very quickly today. On behalf of the applicant, Jose Luis Lopez, Principal Officer and owner of Green Star, Mitch Zabaduk, Vice President of Real Estate Justice Cannabis, applicant's cannabis industry consultant, Stuart Johnson, National Security Director for Justice Cannabis, our project architect, Cody Henderson of Filer S Architects, our project engineer, April Guzman of Horner Schiffern, our security consultant, Ken Boucher of Jensen Hughes, our land planner, George Kissel of Oakwood Kissel Associates, our real estate consultant, Michael Wallen of Price Appraiser Incorporated, our traffic engineer, Luwai Abuna of KLOA. Again, also available for questions is our designer, Ashley Ben Newman of Architectures. So, Mr. Lopez, you are the Principal Officer and owner of the applicant Green Star, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the applicant is a social equity applicant, is defined in the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, correct?
Correct.
And the applicant is a majority-owned Hispanic company, correct?
Yes.
And the applicant has been issued its conditional adult-use dispensing organization license from the state of Illinois, correct?
That is correct.
And again, you plan to establish the adult-use cannabis dispensary within the existing one-story building located at thirty-five forty-five North Kedzie Avenue.
That's correct.
And your proposed hours of operation are seven A M. to nine P M. Monday through Saturday and eight A M. through seven P M. on Sunday.
That's right.
You plan on hiring up to twenty-two employees, of which six to twelve employees will be on site at one time.
Yes.
Okay. And security personnel will be located at the site and will monitor the interior of the proposed dispensary as well as the exterior of the proposed dispensary.
That's correct.
And the applicant, meeting Green Star, plans to invest one point five to two million dollars into the proposed dispensary, correct?
That's correct.
The applicant held two community meetings in which it presented its plans, correct?
Yes.
Both of which were held in August. And notices were sent to property owners located within seven hundred and fifty feet beyond the required two hundred and fifty-foot ordinance requirement, correct?
Yes.
And such notices were both in both English and the Spanish languages, correct?
That is correct.
And you also met with and received a letter of support from the North Branch Works Organization, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Lopez, as you're aware, to have submitted findings of fact in your affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and affidavits?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Zabaduk, you are the Vice President of Real Estate for Justice Cannabis, correct?
That's correct.
Which is a national cannabis company founded in Chicago in two thousand fourteen.
Yes.
Now, your role here is providing consulting services to the applicant in establishing the applicant's proposed dispensary at the subject site.
That's correct.
Which includes developing applicant's operation and security plans, correct?
Yes, it does.
Right. Now, the proposed dispensary will include a waiting check-in area at which time the customer's identification is run through a state database and their age is verified. As only customers twenty-one and above can, can enter into a dispensary, correct?
That is correct.
And once a customer is cleared, staff member will escort the customer onto the sales floor.
Yes.
And there, the customer will have three options in which to purchase product, either pick it up on, as it was previously ordered online, order product through the available touchpads, or order through a sales consultant, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And now, the average transaction time is very short, about five to seven minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there will be, again, as I mentioned, thirteen parking spaces dedicated to the customers of the proposed dispensary, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And as it will be further addressed in, by Mr. Johnson in this hearing, deliveries will occur within this secured triangular lot located adjacent to the existing building, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Which will be secured and only available for deliveries and restricted from public access, correct?
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Mr. Zabaduk, as you're aware, to have submitted findings of fact in your affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson, you're a licensed architect with the firm of Filer S Architects located in St. Louis, Missouri, correct?
Yes.
And you prepared the floor plans for the applicant's proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary at the subject site, which were submitted as part of the special use, correct?
Correct.
And again, the applicant plans to renovate the interior of the existing building in order to conduct its adult-use dispensing operations at the site, correct?
Yes.
Could you just give us a very brief kind of description of the layout of the, of the floor plan, specifically noting the two entrances to the, to the site?
We created a corridor connecting the two sides, so that way customers can enter from either the east or the west side, the west side being North Kedzie, the east side being the parking area. Both entrances are secure. They lead through the Uh, both entrances are secure. They lead through the building to check in, uh, whereas the, um, customer will then be escorted into the sales floor, uh, to purchase the product. All the backyard house space is secured in the left part of the plan with a dedicated delivery entrance to the south.
Great, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Henderson, is it your professional opinion that the floor plans will work properly?
Yes.
And Mr. Henderson, as you're aware, TAF submitted findings of fact to the floor plans to the board, which was submitted into evidence. If you're asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and floor plan?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Geisman, you are a professional engineer with the firm of Horner and Schiffern located in St. Louis, Missouri, correct?
Yes.
And the site and landscape plans were prepared under your direct supervision for the applicant's proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary at the site, correct?
Yes.
And you are familiar with the existing building and subject property, correct?
Yes.
And again, the applicant will improve the triangular lot, which is currently uncopt and in poor condition, with a landscape and a six-foot security fence, correct, around the perimeter of the lot?
Yes.
Great. And the parking area, the thirteen-space parking area, will also be improved to significant landscape as depicted on the landscape plan.
Yes.
And it is your professional opinion that the site and landscape plans will work properly?
Yes.
Great. Ms. Geisman, as you are aware, to have submitted findings of fact in the site plan and landscape plans to the board, which was submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and report?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Johnson, you are the National Security Director for Justice Cannabis, correct?
That's correct.
And Justice Cannabis is again consulting with the applicant in establishing the proposed dispensary, correct?
Correct.
And you and your team of security professionals prepared a robust security plan for the proposed dispensary, which will include a twenty-four-seven video surveillance and security system.
Correct.
And again, your plan includes motion detectors, glass, glass break detectors, shadowproof film, door locks, and also thirty to fifty high-definition cameras, which will be placed within the interior and exterior of the existing building, correct?
Correct.
In fact, two of the high-definition cameras will be dedicated to monitoring the parking area twenty-four-seven, correct?
That is correct.
And the exterior of the proposed dispensary will have mounted lighting on its perimeter active during all hours of the day.
Correct.
And the exterior of the building in turn, including both entrances, will be monitored for loitering to ensure individuals are not lingering around the proposed dis- uh dispensaries premises, correct?
Correct.
And the security system is tied to the Chicago Police Department and OEMC, correct?
That is correct.
Great. And there will also be signage on the parking lot and within the site, which will also prohibit, uh, state the prohibition of any type of loitering at the site, correct?
That is correct.
Great. Now, deliveries will be made directly through the locked security gate located at the entrance of the triangular parcel, adjacent to the existing building, correct?
That is correct.
Applicant's security personnel will meet the courier at the secure day gate located at the entrance of the triangular parcel and ask for identification, correct?
Correct.
And as, as I should mention, these deliveries are scheduled in advance, correct?
Correct.
Once cleared, the courier will then be escorted by the applicant's security member to the proposed side door entrance at the south of the existing building in order to complete delivery, correct?
That is correct.
Which typically takes about fifteen to twenty minutes.
Correct.
And the secured triangular parcel will only be used for deliveries and not accessible by the general public.
That is correct.
Mr. Johnson, as you are aware, TAF submitted findings of fact in your affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and affidavits?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. My next witness, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Boucher, you are a security risk consultant with the firm of Jensen Hughes, correct?
Yes, correct.
And the scope of your assignment was to identify studies examining the impact of recreational cannabis on public safety, correct?
Yes.
Could you just give a brief, short synopsis of, of those findings?
In the findings and the studies particularly, we went for national studies that were based on empirical data in that they couldn't be based on, we didn't accept any based on opinion. And what we found was consistent with what the national trends had been for the last several years. And it start with the dispensary in basically improving safety in a neighborhood, lowering crime in its immediate area, um, showing that it doesn't increase violent crime or even down to nuisance crime. Um, it throughout the, the local neighborhoods of a dis- of a dispensary, it has absolutely no impact on crime at all, except for a slight lowering in most cases. Um, it increases the value of single-family homes. It doesn't really cause an, uh, an increased use of cannabis with youth in the area, and it doesn't increase, really increase traffic or traffic crashes in the area. Um, and all this was, uh, submitted into evidence with the studies with links, um, on my testimony.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Boucher, as you are aware, TAF submitted findings of facts in the letter, uh, summarizing your findings to the board, which was submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kissel, uh, you were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of the proposal to establish an adult-use cannabis dispensary in AC one-dish-one neighborhood, commercial district at the subject property, correct?
That is correct.
Uh, and have you prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings, and conclusions? And has that report been submitted and previously admitted into evidence?
Yes, it has.
Mr. Kissel, if you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings and conclusions contained in your report specifically? That the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria for approval of special uses and specific criteria for adult-use cannabis dispensaries?
Yes, it would.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Kissel. My next, my next witness is Mr. Wolin. Mr. Wolin, the scope of yours, your scope of your assignment was to prepare an analysis as to whether the applicant's proposed special use to establish the cannabis dispensary at the site would have any detrimental effects on surrounding properties, correct?
That is true. Requested special uses in keeping with the intent of this neighborhood commercial district.
Could you provide, again, just a very short synopsis of your findings?
Sure. I inspected the site initially on March nineteenth with follow-up inspections on April tenth, May nineteenth, and during our community meeting on August eighth. And in that, I noticed things that went to my thoughts of criteria, which can lead to my analysis, which I put in my report first. The expected hours of operation, the walk score study in the Google Maps of nearby schools, the hours as compared to other dispensaries, the cannabis studies reviewed and identified in my report, and finally researching MRAD or slash MLS to determine whether there was any market impact caused by this. And I did not find any negative impact, adverse impact caused by this requested special use.
So, Mr. Wolin, the applicant's proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary will comply with the general special use standards and additional cannabis-related standards. Is that correct?
That is true, and I identify that in my report, each of them.
Thank you. Mr. Wolin, as you are aware, to have submitted findings of fact in a report summarizing your findings to this board, which was submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you, Mr. Wolin. And our final witness, Mr. Luay Abuna. Mr. Abuna, the scope of your assignment was to prepare a transportation study to identify the existing transportation condi- conditions within the vicinity of the proposed dispensary. Evaluate the impact the proposed dispensary will have on transportation system and the adequate adequacy of parking supply, correct?
That is correct.
And again, if you could provide just a brief synopsis of your report.
So, we looked at the, uh, traffic conditions surrounding, uh, the site. Uh, we looked at the trip generation that the dispensary will generate. Uh, we looked at the fact that there will be thirteen parking spaces being provided off the alley with access of Addison Street. And our conclusion and findings were that the proposed dispensary will not have an adverse impact on the street system serving the site. Uh, and that the, uh, access to the thirteen parking spaces is adequately located via the alley. And those, those parking spaces will be adequate and accommodate the, the demand that will be generated by uh, the customers, uh, of the proposed dispensary.
Therefore, Mr. Abuna, it is your professional opinion that the applicant's proposed dispensary is designed to promote public's, uh, I'm sorry, pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
Mr. Abuna, as you are aware, TAF submitted findings of fact in a report summarizing your findings to the board, which was submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and report?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our case in chief. As mentioned earlier, we have Ms. Ben Newman. If there's any questions regarding design, uh, we are available to answer any questions for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, this is Commissioner Toy. I got a few questions, uh, to, uh, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Lopez, do you have an agreement to sell your interest in the dispensary?
I do not. Uh, Green Star will be operating and remain owner of the dispensary. Um, Justice Cannabis will stay on as our consultants, as they're very experienced in this, but zero interest in selling the license.
Okay, and then, uh, could you go a little bit deeper on who is funding, uh, the build-out of the property?
Um, it's private funding. That's been secured.
Yeah, you're not answering my question. Who, who is funding the build-out?
Um, we have different investment groups. Um, I, I think at this point Mitch may be able to talk about that a little bit further.
Sure, whoever can answer that question for me.
Mitch, if you can go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we've been, uh, working with, uh, various groups to try to, uh, help and consult with Mr. Lopez to secure some loans or investors into the project. So, that's where the funding sources are gonna come from.
So, you do not have the funding sources in place yet?
We are working with a, uh, you know, I don't want to disclose everything, uh,
Right, you're under oath and I'm asking a question. I don't know if I can, you know, vote on a special use if I can't get my questions answered.
I'm sorry, the, the direct answer is, is no, the funding is not in place right now. We are in negotiations with a construction company that is potentially going to, uh, take the, uh, do the financing for it, and, uh, the payback would be, uh, for the license holder to agree to pay it back over time, uh, immediately after the opening of the store. Uh, we have about two or three construction companies that we're discussing with, and we're in most advanced with one of them. And I was hoping to have had, uh, some good news before this, uh, hearing, but we are still in final negotiations with them.
So, you're asking us to vote on a special use, but you don't have the funding in place yet? I'm not used to doing that, and I've been on this board for twelve years. This is, this is new territory for me, to give a special use, and I'm not sure the applicant has the funding to do it.
Well, I mean, I guess my question, uh, back to, uh, Chairman Toy is, in terms of seeking this special, in seeking the special use, we're in front of the board in terms of whether or not the proposed special use meets the standards, it's standards, except for than the, in, in the zoning ordinance, which doesn't speak to funding, so.
Yeah, we talk about funding all the time, uh, counselor. So, yes, we ask developers where their funding coming from, how much they're gonna make on it, so this is not a question out of character.
Um, it's also been a, a bit of a chicken and egg as well, because, you know, the, they want to make sure that we have our, uh, permits in place, uh, before anybody commits to funding with us, which has actually been a point of contention in the negotiations right now.
Okay, well then who is funding the, uh, the, um, the deposit on the lease? Who's coming up with that? You gotta have a lease in place. Don't tell me you don't even have a lease in place. And who came up with the funding for that?
Fully executed lease, and, uh, that was, that was funded by the applicant.
So, Mr. Lopez, you came up with the deposit for the lease on your own?
No, I did not. We used the funds from, uh, the consulting group.
You used the fund from the consulting group, okay, where I'm getting to. Okay, who is on the lease?
It is green.
Guarantee on the lease, counselor.
The guaran- the guarantor on the lease, on this particular, in this particular, uh, this particular lease is, I believe, Mitch, is it, uh, J.C. Holdco?
So, the, the, this lease is, uh, being.
Guar- the guarantor.
Oh, there has to be a guarantor.
Yeah, yes, no, I'm just confirming with my client that I have the correct entity. I apologize.
That is correct.
Yeah, J.C. Holdco.
J.G.
J.G.
Okay, so that, those are the guarantee on the lease. It's not Mr. Lopez, that.
That is correct.
Hmm, it's interesting. Um, interesting. All right, um, those are my questions, and I have to digest this. I hope, uh, some of my other colleagues have some questions too now.
Any other questions from the board?
I had a question on a different topic. Um, uh, Counsel, you mentioned a little bit about the community meeting process that you had. Um, and you mentioned the radius of notice you provided, but you didn't address the other statutory criteria in terms of notice for this establishment. Could you walk through that, please?
Sure, so I'll talk about the community meeting first, those notices. So, a notice went out to the, um, property owners located within seven hundred and fifty feet. Uh, and that was written notice. Also, there was published notice in the, uh, Chicago Sun-Times. And also, notice was provided to the chairman of the ZBA, as well as, uh, the alderman of the thirty-third ward. And that, that was done for both community meetings, the one on the August eighth and the one on August thirty-first. Then, when we filed the special use application, notices were filed, it were sent, um, to the property owners, again, within seven hundred and fifty feet. Uh, and a posted notice sign on the property as well. So, that was the, that was the, uh, the community meeting and also the, uh, the filing of the act, yeah, of this, of the special use application.
And why was the seven hundred and fifty feet radius determined?
That is, uh, was at the request of the alderman. That is their protocol. Um, and they asked us if we could, um, cover that radius, of which we were, we were happy to do so.
And, uh, where were the community meetings located?
The first community meeting was located at Revolution Brewery. Um, and there is, and there are two reasons why we had a second community meeting. The first was held at Revolution Brewery. There were some questions from the community that we wanted to address, but also, it was discovered after that meeting that that brewery is not located in the thirty-third ward, which is a requirement that your community meeting be held in the ward in which the dispensary is held. And so, we had a second community meeting in order to obviously meet that requirement, and that was held at Rincon Medical Building, uh, Medical Services, and that is located within the boundaries of the, uh, of the thirty-third ward.
In that second community meeting, how many people attended?
I believe I will defer, uh, my colleague Carl Camalucci was the, was the attorney. I believe there, from what I was told by clients, um, and I'm sorry, by our group, I believe, and what the ca- uh, call-in sheet, uh, also reflected is, I believe there are about, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Lopez, about maybe fif- twenty people?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. I think it was anywhere between fifteen and twenty. I think some people came for the, the early half, and then they, they took off after they felt, you know, pretty satisfied with our response to the community. But I think, I think twenty's a very fair number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I think that's all we need. Uh, we're gonna take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much. Um, have a nice weekend. Thank you very much for accommodating our request. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, we're going back in the regular order. We are at three seventy-five dash twenty-two dash Z and three seventy-six dash twenty-two dash I'm sorry, 375-22-S and 376-22-Z. This is 4911 Northwestern.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Ali, on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Counselor. Let's see here. All right. If there are any objectors or supporters, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Mr. Chairman, we should have three witnesses. I, I see them all. Tom Sarek represents the, the applicant. Joe Ryan is our project appraiser and John Joyce is our project architect.
Okay. Great. Let me start with Tom. Could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Tom Sarek. Address is 1544 West North Avenue, Unit 101, Chicago, Illinois 60642.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. John Joyce, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, John Joyce, 1374 North Walcott Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60622.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, and Joe Ryan has been sworn in today already and his expertise has been recognized.
Excellent.
I just check here. No one has raised their hand in objection. You can go with the short form.
We shall. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. For the record.
Oh, you know what? I gotta read the recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me, let me do this. All right, this is the recommendation for 375-22-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, three-dwelling unit building with a detached three-car, three-car garage with roof deck, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of architectural site plan dated October 20th, 2022. The first and lower level floor plans and the elevations, three sheets, dated October 19th, 2022. And the second through fourth floor plans and roof plans, two sheets, dated July 18th, 2022. All prepared by J O M X Architecture. Okay, now you can proceed.
Thank you. Again, Matthew Ali, on behalf of the applicant. I am appearing today on behalf of 4911 N Western LLC, the applicant for this special use and variation for the property located at 4911 Northwestern Avenue. As a brief overview, the subject property is a substandard lot measuring 28.8 feet wide, but only 101.07 feet deep and is currently unimproved and vacant. In 2019, for the same property, the applicant sought and was granted a special use and variation for a similar project with four stories, three dwelling units, including ground floor residential. However, the acquisition of the property and the 2019 project plans relied on two erroneous surveys that showed the property as measuring 120 feet deep and not the correct 101 foot depth of the property. It wasn't until excavation began that the error in the surveys was identified, requiring new plans in today's CBA relief applications. The applicant now seeks to develop the vacant lot with a similar four-story, three-dwelling unit building and a three-car garage. Mr. Chairman, one note is that the project now proposes a garage and not a carport, as described in the project summary. But this shift in garage plans does not impact the zoning relief needed for this project. And those are similarly reflected in the dated plans that were pursuant to the DPD recommendation, reflecting our back and forth with Nancy and staff over the past couple of days. The property is zoned B3-2, which requires ground floor commercial space, unless a special use is obtained for ground floor residential. Our project appraiser will testify that there is zero demand for additional commercial space in this area as there are already significant commercial vacancies in this commercial artery. And that ground floor residential is prevalent and in the character of the nearby area. Further, the variation here is to allow for a third dwelling unit now on a smaller lot, where three dwelling units would have been permitted by right on the lot size. The applicant thought that it was acquiring. But critically, if the commercial space was compatible with and viable in this area, neither the special use nor the variation would be needed and the project could proceed by right. Lastly, the applicant has discussed this project and the required special use and variation with the immediately adjacent neighbors and has not received and has received no objections or concerns. The applicant has also discussed this project with Alderman Vazquez's office, who has provided an email of no objection. Mr. Chairman, at this time, we now would call our first witness, Mr. Tom Sarek. Mr. Sarek, you are a manager member of 4911 N Western LLC, correct?
Correct.
And 4911 N Western LLC has owned the property at 4911 Northwestern Avenue since 2016.
That's correct.
And in fact, in 2019, as discussed, you previously obtained a special use and variation for a similar project to develop, to develop this property.
Correct.
But due to the erroneous surveys, that project was scrapped. Project, project plans were redeveloped and we are now back before the board for the special use and variation being sought today.
That's correct.
Mr. Sarek, you heard my opening statement and summary of these special use and variation applications. Do you concur with my summary of this matter?
I do.
Mr. Sarek, did you also submit an affidavit to the ZBA prior to today's hearing?
I did.
Are the statements made in that affidavit true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements contained within your affidavit?
Yes.
Lastly, Mr. Sarek, you have discussed the project with your neighbors. Are you aware of any objections or, or concerns?
None that I'm aware of.
And you've also discussed the project with Alderman Vazquez's office, who has provided a letter of no objection, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions at this time, we can call our second what, second witness, Joe Ryan, the project's appraiser.
Just go ahead, get all your witnesses on and we'll open it up for questions.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Ryan, you are an appraiser licensed by the state of Illinois, correct?
Yes.
You are also the project appraiser, subject to these special use and variation applications for the property located at 4911 Northwestern, correct?
Yes.
Did you prepare a report evaluating this special use application for compliance with the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Did.
Are the statements made in this report true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements contained within your report?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, you also submitted an affidavit to the board prior to today's hearing, correct?
Yes.
The statements contained within your affidavit are also true and correct?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, do you also adopt as your testimony here today the statements contained within your affidavit?
I do, yes.
Thank you. And turning to our architect, Mr. John Joyce. Mr. Joyce, you are an architect licensed by the state of Illinois, correct?
Correct.
You are also the project architect for the plans, subject to these special use and variation applications at 4911 Northwestern, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Joyce, did you also submit an affidavit to the board prior to today's hearing?
Yes.
Are the statements contained within that affidavit true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements contained within that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that would conclude the applicant's case in chief. We would welcome any questions from the board regarding this project or our proposed finding of facts.
Any questions from the board? I think we have what we need. We're going to take it under advisement.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, we do need to take another matter out of order. This is calendar number 293- dash 22-dash-Z. This is 613 to 615 East 103rd Street. Again, we are calling 293-22-dash-Z. 613 to 615 East 103rd. If you are here in support or objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Okay, I can see that we do have Counselor Pekarsky. So we've got Andre Knowles and we've got Joe Ryan. The Alderman is here on this one. Here we go, promoting. Okay, I can see we do have Alderman Beal on. Alderman, would, would you like to speak in the, in the beginning or at the end? It's, it's your preference.
I prefer to end, thank you.
Okay. And Alderman, before, before we begin, because it does kind of matter for how we proceed, are, are you here in support or objection?
Objection.
Okay, thank you. All right, Counselor Pekarsky.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. You're, you're here. I'm going to get your witnesses sworn and then you can proceed. Andre, can you state your name and address, please?
Andre Knowles, address 13110 Linder Court, Crestwood, Illinois 60418.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. And then Joe Ryan has already been sworn and his expertise has been recognized. Thomas Pekarsky, is, is he on this one?
I'm, I'm here in a supporting capacity. I'm not the principal attorney on, on this.
I got you. Okay, thank you. Okay, Counselor John Pekarsky, the Alderman is here in, in objection, so please do put your full case on. And then we will hear from the Alderman.
That I will. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Pekarsky. I'm an attorney with offices at 55 West Monroe Street. And this evening I represent Andre Knowles, N-A-L-L-S. And the property at 613-15 East 103rd Street. The property measures 50 frontage feet by a depth of 125 feet. And it is zoned B31. The building, the property is improved with a one-story brick structure that is currently vacant. The proposed use by my client is for an event space for adult parties with use limited to those the use for people up and over 35 years of age, which is his target market. The client purchased the property in 2011. And it was used as a union hall at that point. The union moved away and from approximately 2012 to 2018, the property was used as a church. The property has been unused, basically, since that time. The church moved out, as I said, in 2018. And my client has been seeking either to lease it or to use it. So he began to think about the use of an event space. My client did use it on occasion as an event space. Then realized that he must obtain a public place of amusement license for an event space. He then went to the local community organizations. And then to the local Alderman's office. My client has presented plans for a 60-space event space, or 60-unit is event space with six onsite parking spaces. By way of scheduling where this property is located, it is in an almost totally unimproved block. To the west of the subject site are 10 vacant lots owned by the Pullman Pullman Presbyterian Church. To the east of, of the subject site are four unimproved lots owned by the city. My client would like to use the subject site as an event space and has met with the local community of which he is an, an active member. I believe that the board has in its file, a letter of support from the Rosemore Community Association. And a letter, a subsequent letter of further indicating the support to the current date by the Rosemore Community Association. The client has also met with the Rose, Roseland Commu, Chamber of Commerce who has also supported the proposal. My client is an active member of the community and has been an active member of the community since 2011. We believe that the proposed use is compatible with the community. There is no other commercial or residential use on the block being 10 vacant lots to the west and four vacant lots to the east. My client has provided six onsite parking spaces, which meets the code standard. And I think the testimony from our witness, Mr. Joseph Ryan, will be that he believes that the onsite parking Uh, believes that, uh, the, uh, onsite parking, uh, plus the, uh, street parking is more than sufficient. To, uh, uh, take care of, of the sixty space event. Uh, venue. Uh, with that, I would, uh, call my first, uh, witness, Mr. Andre Knowles. Andre, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, now, please state your name.
Andre Knowles, N A L L S.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you, uh, swear, Mr. Knowles in?
Uh, he's, uh, he's already been sworn.
Okay. Um, now, Mr. Knowles, it, it's my understanding that you purchased this property in two thousand and eleven.
That is correct.
And, uh, at that time, did you become a member of the, uh, Roseland, uh, Community Association?
Uh, no, it was after that date, but, uh, the time that I purchased it, I, uh, went to the Alderman's office because, well, first I reached out to, uh. The Chamber of Commerce, because I was gonna do a event space at first, but I ended up getting, uh, the church guy. So he ended up, uh, taking possession of the property. But I did, uh, reach out to everyone about my plan of what I was gonna do and the Chamber of Commerce told me to make sure. That I got with the, uh, Rosemore Community, but for all those years up until, you know, eighteen. Uh, I had the passenger, so the plans had, had changed. So I, so I, I had Cedar, uh, in the storefront to the west.
What is Cedar, sir?
Uh, Cedar, that's the, they do the, uh, uh, it was, actually it was Brock Services, but Cedar, so you know, they did the discounts. For the, uh, seniors, uh, things like that, you know, work with the seniors with their bills and, uh, things like that, things of that sort.
So it's a social service organization?
Yes.
Okay, uh, please continue.
Yeah, so, um, as time passed and I realized what I was gonna do, I, uh, I stayed in, in constant contact with the, uh, with, with Andrea Reed from the Chamber. And, uh, and the neighbors to the back, uh, of me, so. Uh, I let everybody know what, what my plan was, what I was gonna do, everybody was in support of me. And then, uh, COVID came along and, uh, during the COVID time, what had happened. Uh, a Miss, uh, Pastor, uh, Kim, she's associated with, uh, with the CAPS organization. So they ended up using my, uh, my location to do, uh, food giveaways. Uh, several, several times during COVID, they did, uh, food giveaways, had a few other organizations that reached out, uh, they did, uh. Clothes giveaways, uh, from the location, uh, with that came the, uh, people, the residents from the neighborhood, I had. Several other events that came from, you know, those things after, uh, the COVID numbers, you know, went down and they let people. Uh, have movement and, uh, event spaces do things, so ended up having, uh, different events that just sprung off those. Uh, I had, uh, what's that, uh, a cancer survivor event. Uh, what's that, I had, uh, mothers who lost, uh, daughters and daughters who lost their mothers to violence event, uh. I had, uh, people reach out from, uh, the Chamber and also from the Alderman's office, uh, you had some, uh, prominent elders. In the area that passed on, uh, they didn't have any place to do repasses. Uh, had repasses there for people from the community, uh. What's this, I had, uh, neighbors, uh, immediate to the back, uh, I've had, uh, AA meetings. Uh, you know, there was, uh, people from the community, I asked, you know, the neighbors, so, uh, the few events that I've had there. Uh, I've asked my neighbors to the back, uh, anything, you know, did they have any kind of issues, uh, with me? Uh, about like music, uh, people. And the one neighbor that's directly to the back, uh, she has a mother that, that's in a wheelchair, so she said, what noise are you talking about? I said, well, you know, we have music playing inside and she told me, she said, well, my mother was wondering, what do you do over there? Because we don't ever hear anything, but you know, we'll see you. So, you know, I, I did a survey of, of that whole block, nobody had any issues, one, uh, elderly lady. Me and her spoke because there was a, a paper on the lot to the west of me, which, uh, came from, you know, the school kids. So I, I clean that up, uh, I keep those lots clean, I actually, uh, pay to have, when the city don't, uh. Uh, move the, the lots to the west of me, I actually pay to have those lots cleaned. That's, uh, I pay like, what, every two weeks I will pay like three hundred dollars, I pay the guy who's, you know, uh, actually. Another neighbor at the end of the block that has a, a landscaping company, young man, I support him, I keep the lots clean on both sides. And also another thing, when I first purchased the property, I, I wanted to, uh, purchase the lots to the east and to the west. And somebody told me that the lots to the east was privately owned. I looked it up, I couldn't find any names for that, the lots to the west, I was always told, was, uh, privately owned, uh. Linked up with, uh, Sheila from the Commerce, uh, letters were sent out to the names that came up as the owners. Uh, nothing ever came back, only until, uh, this mailing went out about me wanting to get the, uh, the license. Did I find out that the church owned the lots and that was just by happenstance, because a friend of mine was down there at the church and saw the posting. With my address and the lady told him, oh, we own those lots. So the conversation came, you know, about the lots, I said, I'm willing to purchase those lots, so, uh. Or, you know, lease them, so I've, uh, sent that proposal to the church. Uh, they're gonna take a look at that this coming Sunday, because they have a board to have to look at that. So I say, I'd like to say that, uh, I've, uh. Spoke with the committee.
Suffice it to say, you have been an active member of the community. Do you regularly attend the, uh, Rosemore Community Association meetings?
I've, I've been the, uh, the guest speaker like three times and I didn't know I was gonna be the guest speaker, because of Miss Cozy. You know, she invited me, I, I'd been going. But, uh, she invited me and I popped in, you know, I was running late, because I was leaving work. And I showed up and she said, you know, hey, this is our guest speaker and she introduced me, she had told everybody about, you know, uh. My event space, which the name is ten-three for a hundred and third. And, uh, everybody there at the first meeting, it probably was twenty-five to almost thirty people, everybody was excited, asked what my plan was. You know, and I told them, uh, you know, how, uh, what I planned on doing and what I didn't plan on doing, I. I'm not entertaining in, any kind of hip hop, uh, they call it drill music, that's the violin music, I'm not, uh, when it comes to, uh, repasses. I'm, I'm really not big on repasses, those would, uh, those would have to come from, you know, those have been recommended. From like the Alderman's office or the Chamber or something like that, I'm, I'm just not welcoming anything and everything, uh, to the neighborhood, because. That can have an impact on the neighborhood, plus myself, so I like living.
Let, let, let's, let's talk a little bit of, about, uh, your use of this site. It's my understanding that your target, uh, audience is, uh, adults, uh, thirty-five years of age and older, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct and I, and it's not, uh, it's not anything like a club. This is totally private events, I mean, like birthday parties, you know, uh, you know, sixty-five, things like that, there's, uh. You know, uh, ticket sale events, I don't believe in those, because those just invite pretty much anybody. So let's say if somebody wanna have a birthday party, you can't have a ticket sale birthday party. If it's your birthday party, this is gonna be your head count, uh, and that's gonna be it. And another thing, uh, a- about how with the events that I have done there. And the community can, can tell the Alderman, uh, there's nobody ever out front of my establishment. Never, I don't allow any loitering out front, there's nobody standing outside with red cups, smoking cigarettes, any of that, I. I keep the front of my established clean, my establishment clean and clear. Also, I don't plan on trying to get a, a liquor license, uh. It will be, um, a license, you know, caterer that has the, you know, the bartender license plus in, insurance. Things of that sort, I don't plan on selling liquor myself, I know that area is voted dry, so I can't do it. So I plan on abiding by any and all rules to, to keep the, the community, the residents and myself. Safe and so far, I have proven that, I just want the chance, you know, just to get the license, the PPA and move on.
Is it, so it's, it's, it's my understanding, uh, that you will not, uh, have a liquor license. Uh, nor that you will do food prep at this location, is that correct?
That is correct.
That, uh, caterers can come in who are licensed, uh, both for, uh, liquor, uh, and, uh, food prep, is that correct?
I have, that is correct, I have a, a licensed caterer that's, that lives in Rosemore.
It, it's my understanding, uh, that your hours of operation, uh, are, uh, Saturday and Sunday. From twelve noon to one, uh, AM, is that correct?
That's correct, but actually, uh, Friday as well, uh, Friday would be until midnight and, uh, and I'm looking to do. Uh, things during the week for that, uh, Monday through Thursday, wanna do, uh, some kind of, you know, training, you know, things to help the community out, to help the kids out. Uh, job training, uh, things of that sort, so I, I, I've already, uh, shown that I'm just not a party spot. That is not my goal, I'm not trying to be a club, that's not what I want. I wanna bring things to the community that, that is not offered, uh, people don't have to travel to do, but at the same time, do it safely.
It, it's my understanding that depending upon the size of the, uh, party, that you will have. No less than two and probably no more than four employees plus yourself onsite, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, now, uh, you, uh. Are, have, uh, owned this property for a long time, uh, can you tell me what the taxes are on this property?
Taxes are roughly around twenty thousand a year, like twenty-one.
On a one-story, uh, office building, is that correct?
Yes, it's two storefronts.
Uh, two storefronts, uh, that will be incorporated into one, is that correct?
I would like to, yes.
Okay, fine, um, now, uh, in, in your opinion, uh, will this. Proposed use in any way, uh, be injurious to surrounding property values? In your opinion?
It, it shouldn't damage property values, if anything, it's, it's gonna help it.
It creates, uh, a, uh, vitality, uh, at, uh, this location on a hundred and third street, is that correct?
Yes, and, and it's my intention to, to buy more property. On a hundred and third street and I'm willing to work with the Alderman, the Chamber of Commerce for the, the, I, any ideas that they have. For, for businesses that they would like to see on a hundred and third.
Now, it, it's my understanding also that, uh, if you do not get this variation. Uh, you cannot, uh, uh, obtain a license, is that correct?
Yes.
And the variation is simply, uh, to have a PPA license within one hundred and twenty-five feet. Uh, of a residentially zoned property, is that correct?
Yes.
But the entire frontage along a hundred and third street is commercially zoned, isn't that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Now, uh. This is truly a unique situation, because, uh, there are no neighbors on a hundred and third street. Uh, and you've not had any complaints, uh, about the neighbors to the rear. Is that correct?
None that I know of, that is correct.
Okay, the, the building itself, uh, is, uh, forty-five feet. Uh, from the, uh, rear lot line of, of the bill, of the, uh, property, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that between you and the next west, uh, next, uh, neighbors across the, uh, alley. Uh, there's at least forty-five feet plus, uh, uh, an eighteen-foot alley, plus their garages. Plus their backyards, is that correct?
That is correct.
So is it your opinion that, uh, under no circumstances will you have an adverse effect upon the community?
That is correct, I've, well, I've, I've already, uh, talked to the neighbors that are immediately, immediately behind me and a few houses to the, uh. East and the west and there have been no complaints.
Fine, I have no further questions of, uh, Mr. Knowles.
Okay, uh, you can, uh, go on to, uh, Joe Ryan.
Mr. Ryan, are you available?
Yes, sorry.
Uh, please state your name, address and occupation.
Joseph M. Ryan, M A I, President, LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Uh, at my request, have you, have you examined the subject site and its surrounding environs?
I have.
Can you please describe the subject site and then the surrounding environs of the subject site?
Subject's a one-story masonry constructed, uh, eighty-four hundred. Or, uh, I'm sorry, it's a sixteen-hundred square foot building and an eighty-four hundred, uh, square foot lot. The, uh, uh. Vacant lots to the east and west of the property. Um, east of it is the Vit Act and then, um, Public High School and, uh, Gately Stadium. In that direction, east of Cottage and, uh, west of it is, uh, as I said, a vacant lot. There's a church across the street and a church to the west.
So it, is, is it a correct statement that there are four vacant lots to the east of the subject site and ten vacant lots? Uh, to the west of the subject site?
That's what the tax bands indicated, yes.
So this is, is truly a, a unique, uh, area, uh, basically, it, it's, uh, the subject, uh, building. Is, is, is of and by itself on the entire block, is that correct?
Um. Fine and large, yes.
Okay, the, uh, proposed use, are you familiar with the, the proposed use, uh, to be made by Mr. Knowles?
I am, he's applying for a PPA license.
And the, uh, reason we are here is, uh, because, uh, we're seeking a variation to have the PPA license. Uh, located within a hundred and twenty-five of feet of, uh, a, uh, an R-three zone property, is that correct?
That's correct, the R-three zone property is to the south.
Okay, you were here when Mr. Uh, Knowles, uh, described his, uh, proposed use?
Yes.
And he has described the proposed use directly to you, is that correct?
He has, yes.
Uh, in your opinion, will the proposed use in any way alter the essential character of the neighborhood in which it's located?
Oh, not at all.
Will it any way endanger public welfare, will it create, uh, problems for the community?
Um, no, according to his business plan, it would not, no.
Okay. The, uh, subject, uh, site. If, uh, the variation is not granted, cannot be used, is that correct? Or can't be used for the, uh, proposed use?
That, that is correct.
Now, based upon its history of, of being, uh, only sporadically used since, uh, two thousand and eighteen. That would be an undue hardship on the, both on the property and on the client and candidly on the community, wouldn't it be?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions of Mr. Ryan.
Okay, uh, any questions from the board before we go to Alderman Beal? All right, let's go to Alderman Beal and then we'll see, there may be questions later, but, uh, Alderman Beal, uh, thank you for, uh, coming today. Could you just, uh, state your name and role, please? Um could you just uh state your name and role, please?
Absolutely. Anthony Beal, Alderman of the Ninth Ward.
And uh do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
All right, Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I ask a few questions?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Knowles, you've owned this property for how long?
That's two thousand and eleven.
Okay, and you say the church was in there from two thousand and eleven until when?
No, the church was there for like uh from two thousand and twelve to September of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, did that church have a special use?
To be honest with you, I don't know what they had.
Okay, uh you aware that a church in a business district is supposed to have a special use?
No, because uh what it was, it was like. To be honest with you, Alderman, it really wasn't like a church church. They would like hold meetings. It wasn't a real congregation. It probably was, I would say, at the most I ever seen when I went by there. Was probably eight to ten people. So I wouldn't really call it a a, you know, a large uh congregation type church. It was a Muslim guy. And he had, you know, just a few people there with him. Uh and to be honest with you. I thought they was going to use it like every Sunday and maybe a few days during the week because. Uh when he first came to me, you know, I thought I was going to be able to do what I wanted to do plus have him, you know. To rent it out, you know, for a few days, but they didn't want to share it. So they, you know, just did a lease where it was just solely them using it. And I would say out of a month, if they were there six times. I think that would be the most and not a lot of people. It like they didn't, you know, uh clutter the street, anything like that. Most I probably seen was fifteen. Something like that, but not a lot. And that's when they had like a little uh birthday thing. But yeah, I didn't I didn't know uh what uh what it takes for a church to, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Six times in a month, you have four Sundays in a month, so they could probably have church there at least four times out of the month.
But uh a lot of Sundays, they weren't there, so they might stop there during the week. But yeah, it wasn't uh like a real church type situation, to be honest with you.
Okay, all right. Um and once the church moved, you took it over when?
What was that again? Your phone broke up.
When when did you take over the property after the church left?
Oh, once they left, you know, I actually own it, so it was always mine. So, you know. I so I want they take it over.
When did you convert it into an event space?
Uh once they pretty much left, what happened? Uh I was trying to get a plan together, so I was, you know, straightening up things and then uh what COVID happened not too long after that. So pretty much the event thing kind of happened with COVID. Well, during that, you know, time, then right after that, you know, uh like the pastor would use it. And 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 things like that. And then came uh, you know, like the some other, you know, the clothes giveaway thing. Uh with that, I had uh, to be honest with you, uh some, you know, with the caps, a lot of police officers, you know, were were there all the time. Uh and. That's who pretty much started using it for like a few birthday parties and stuff like that. So. It it really wasn't a planned out thing at that time, to be honest with you, uh Alderman. It's something that just like happened originally when I first purchased it. That was my plan, but it didn't happen because of the minister. So it's like with the COVID thing, it just happened. To be honest with you, I'm not gonna lie to you. It's like people like, hey, thi- this is nice. Can I do this? And it just happened. So everybody in the community would come through. They were like, hey, this is nice. It's a. The word they would use is is the best kept secret on one hundred and third because nobody knew it was there and knew what it looked like on the inside. Till they stepped foot inside, everybody fell in love with it.
Okay, um according to Facebook, uh twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen is when you first started having official events spaces there. Is that correct?
Like I say, yeah.
Okay, all right, and. When you turned it into an event space, did you obtain permits for the buildout?
There there was no build out needed.
Okay, according to your plans, you have office space, you have a DJ booth, uh catering room, um HVAC. That's uh so there there was no electrical work done. There was no plumbing work done, no drywall, no woodwork, no carpentry work. None of that work happened?
It was a a hall when I purchased it. It was a a a open space and the only thing that was taken out. It was a like a some old school uh office dividers. And that was taken out and painted. So.
That was presented to the board is a plan. It is not in uh in progress yet, uh and it has not been built out.
Okay, counselor, um I would respectfully disagree with you.
Alderman Beal.
The the location has been built out and there have been numerous events at the location. Um if we look at your Facebook page. There's numerous events that have taken place at the location. There's let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
There's numerous events that have taken place at the location. Uh there's events that have happened as late as August fifteenth. Even after you've applied for your special use and no permits have ever been. Established for any type of work or build out at the location. Uh and there have been events where you've had liquor. Is that correct?
It was a licensed caterer. That's correct. But also back to a build out, I'm Bill and just so you know. I'm not trying to battle you on anything. I'm I'm just trying to get the location correct. I don't want to fight. At all. That's not who I am. I just want to get things proper. So I I'm 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 not trying to battle you. I'm not trying to deny anything. That's why right up front, I told you some of the events tha- that that was there. I'm not trying to 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 deny anything. But there was no build out needed because when I bought it, it was a hall. It it was always an open space. I took out some old uh office dividers that was in there, but there was there was no build out needed. There 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 is nothing to build out. It's what I'm pretty much saying. It's paint.
Okay, all right. Uh knowing that that area is voted dry, uh there's supposed to be no liquor on the premises. For for sale.
Even if you have a a licensed bartender?
Even if you have a licensed bartender, that area is voted dry.
I thought voted dry, I mean, you couldn't.
You cannot sell liquor.
And okay, and and you can have a liquor license. So.
It's voted dry regardless if they have a um liquor license for their catering event. Those areas, if it's voted dry, you're not supposed to be able to sell liquor on the premises.
I was misinformed.
Okay.
I'm uh Alderman, I'm not here to fight with you. I'm here to get information so I can do what I need to do to be in compliance.
Okay, um let me ask you, uh are you using any of the lots adjacent to you for parking?
I'm not using any of the lots. I park my private vehicle. Back by the alley next next to my property. So you you will only see one or two vehicles parked back there. I am not using those lots. Uh what had happened? I did use those lots once or twice. I was informed not to use them and the lot to the east. Somebody called one time. I don't know if they call your office, but they said that I was using that lot. I wasn't. It was a guy. And I don't know if he lived on that next block over, but he was parking his tractor trailer trucks. And some private ve- personal vehicles and then somebody else started parking a a. A car hauler next to my fence to the east. And I guess somebody thought that was me, but. I long ago stopped using those lots. And also, I I wanted to actually purchase those lots, but once again. I was misinformed about who the owners was until they put the city sign up on the east. And I found out from the church that the church, you know, that the church owned the lots to the west. Which I would, you know, I've been since I've purchased that property, I've been trying to find that, trying to find out who owned those lots so I could purchase those lots. Because like I said, once again, when I had Seda as a tenant and then, you know, it was basically seniors going there. I didn't want the seniors to have to walk in the street because of the, you know, traffic coming down through there. So I wanted my seniors to be off the street. That's why I wanted those lots at first. But it would make sense if I have that building right there and it's that that is that many vacant lots. I should have lots for what so for whatever business is there, it would be nice to have parking lot. It makes sense because people drive kind of fast down one hundred and thirty.
Okay, all right, um. All right, those are all the questions I have for Mr. Knowles. Um commissioners, I um. Um, I think I've laid out a a pretty extensive, um. I guess um a version of the rules and regulations since two thousand and eleven, since it was a church without a special use. We've been operating as a um as a hall since two thousand and eighteen without having a special use. Um, you know, there were no permits ever obtained on the premises. Uh there's not adequate parking. On at the facility uh on the street for if you look at sixty seats as the uh drawing says here, sixty seats. Uh there's no adequate parking to um support a uh an event space. Um with sixty seats, um because you have to, you can't use street parking. For you have to have parking uh on premises and right now there's no parking on premises at the location whatsoever. And so if I can indulge on the commissioners, uh I know I've been extremely busy and I know Mr. Knowles attorney has been. Uh reaching out to me. We've been in budget hearings and things like that. I do believe there may be some middle ground. But I would just ask that you all give me another month to meet with Mr. Knowles and see if we can work these issues out. As far as the parking, as far as his uh hours of operation, his security plan and things like that. Uh because you know, that is a quiet area and I have been getting some calls. Um and I'm not trying to hurt Mr. Knowles, but at the same time, I have to protect the interest of the community. So I would just ask for another thirty-day. Delay in order for me to meet with Mr. Knowles and his attorney if need be to work out the issues with the police department.
O- okay, uh we've we've got a a a request for a continuance uh from Alderman Beal. Uh uh Mr. Mr. Knowles, uh are you are you in agreement with a continuance uh to next month?
Most definitely, most definitely.
I I think that's a great idea. Um all right, this matter is going to be continued uh to know to the uh zoning board of appeals hearing on November eighteenth. Twenty twenty-two and no further notice will be given.
Uh thank you, uh Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and thank you, uh Alderman Beal.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody for that.
See Alderman.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we are going to get back to the regular call. So again, just just to state for the record, that's two ninety-three dash twenty-two dash C is being continued to November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. No further notice will be given. Okay. All right, we are now. Getting back to the regular order. Which I believe is, wait a second. Three seventy-seven. Dash twenty-two dash S. This is twenty-eight twenty-seven West Sirmac.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm Carol Brown, the attorney for this matter. Should I go ahead or shall I wait?
Uh gi- give me one moment here.
Sure. Okay, I didn't know if you were waiting for me. Thank you.
No, 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 but thank you. Um. Trying to trying to get organized here.
Take your time.
Okay, so it looks like you've got uh two witnesses.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And if there are any um supporters or objectors for this matter, please uh raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Uh councillor Brown, I can see uh Alex. I I'm not seeing Maria yet.
Um Maria, are you there? Or uh Alex, could you? Alex and Maria are in the same building. Alex, maybe you could go help her.
Let's see here. It looks like we got somebody asking to be promoted. Let's see here.
Oh, I see Susanna. Uh Maria Susanna Aguilar, she is there.
Oh, okay, great.
Sorry, her uh name is simply Susanna Aguilar on her Zoom box, which is the name she commonly uses. Uh different from the name from her uh from her official name under which her application is filed.
Okay. All right, uh Maria, if you could um just unmute. If you're on a phone, I think it's star six.
Uh I'm on a computer.
There we go. There we go. We got you. Um can you uh state your name and address, please?
Yes, uh my name is Maria Susanna Aguilar Hernandez. Uh twenty-seven zero four West Twenty-second Place, Chicago Illinois six zero six zero eight.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And Alex, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, uh my name is Alex Orozco. I'm at sixteen thirty-six Norwells, Chicago Illinois six oh six one four.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. And there are no objectors on this matter. Uh let me read. The department's recommendation. Okay, this is the recommendation for calendar number three seventy-seven dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment. Provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, the Spot Spa. And the establishment maintains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade. Which shall not be painted over, darkened or obstructed in any way so that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street. And councillor Brown, there are no objectors, so you can do the short form.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um again, for the record, my name is Carol Brown. I am an attorney here on behalf of the applicant. Uh I have two people with me today. The first person, as you heard, is Maria Susanna Aguilar Hernandez. Uh Ms. Aguilar Hernandez is the sole owner of the Spatspa LLC, which is the applicant. The second person with me is Alex Orozco, who is the urban planning, urban planning expert, urban planner for this project. Um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this is a pretty straightforward case in which the applicant is requesting a special use designation. For a massage establishment in the twelfth ward at twenty-eight twenty-seven West Sirmac Road in Little Village. Um this is on Sirmac, just west of California. Um it's a vibrant commercial strip of small retail-type businesses. The building is an existing one-story commercial building with two units. Um and my client is leasing the unit on the east side, which is the twenty-eight twenty-seven West Sirmac address, which you see in front of you. Uh the space is approximately fourteen hundred and eighty feet. Uh I'm sorry, fourteen hundred and eighty square feet. Uh this particular space has been vacant for over eighteen months, so this is a great opportunity to reuse an un-unoccupied. Space to provide a wellness and healing service that's not currently available in the neighborhood. In fact, based on our research, the two closest massage establishments are one that is located. About one point five miles to the west near Twenty-S sixth and Pulaski, and the other one is located over two miles to the east at Eighteenth and Halsted. Um the also the unit on the west side of this uh one-story building with two units. Um offers chiropractic medical services, which is a nice complimentary use to the massage establishment that my client is proposing. And my client has discussed her proposed establishment with the chiropractor practice and they are very much in support of of her proposed massage establishment. Um, also, you can see, uh, that there's a parking lot, it's actually a six-car parking lot in the rear of the building. And there's also ample street parking, uh, and the, the street is pedestrian-friendly with a lot of foot traffic, which we think is good for business. Um, my client has been a licensed and certified massage therapist, practicing in Chicago for seven years. And during that time, she has trained and mentored many new massage therapists, so she has a lot of experience in this particular field. We've spoken with the Alderman's office and he supports the use of the space for a massage establishment and the special use designation, and o- of course, in compliance with the ordinance, we sent written notice to all property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the property and posted notice at the property. Um, so now, if it's okay with you, I'll, I'll briefly call my witnesses and then we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Um. Uh, Ms. Aguilar Hernandez. Yes, can you please state your name again for the record?
Yes, my name is Maria Susanna Aguilar Hernandez.
Thank you, and uh, you are the owner of the Spatspa LLC and the applicant for the special use designation that is the subject of today's hearing, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you submitted an affidavit in this matter, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And you prepared the findings of fact for this matter, correct?
Yes, I have.
And if asked to testify today, your testimony would be substantially the same as the statements in your affidavit and the findings of fact, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I will move on to Mr. Orozco, if that's okay.
Yes, uh, and, and um, just before you go to Mr. Orozco, I did review uh, Mr. Orozco's CV and the board does recognize his expertise.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Orozco, can you state your name again for the record?
Sure, my name is Alex Orozco.
And, uh, you are an urban planner, correct?
Correct, I'm an urban planner, been an urban planner for more than twenty years, this is Chicago and others used across the country.
Okay, thank you. And you submitted an affidavit in this matter, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And you have firsthand knowledge of the applicant's proposal and of the neighborhood for the proposed establishment, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And you have reviewed the findings of fact for this matter, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you, and you prepared the expert report that accompanies the findings of fact for this matter?
That's right, yes.
Um, and is it correct that you concluded that the proposed special use designation meets all five criteria set forth in the Chicago zoning ordinance for special use designation?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and if asked to testify today, uh, your testimony would be the same, substantially the same as your statements in your affidavit and your report that accompanies the findings of fact, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this concludes our case. We would be glad to take any questions from you or from the commissioners.
Thank you, any questions from the board?
Uh, yes, I just, uh, Counselor Brown, is it, uh, is the current applicant currently operating or um, that she's just set up the business and getting ready to do so?
Correct, she's not currently operating, um, she's a, a licensed massage therapist actually practicing at another facility at which she's employed, um, or which is an independent contractor, so she would not, she's not currently operating in this space.
Um, and how, and if this permit were granted, would she then work full-time at this location?
Yes. And if you would like to ask her that question, you may, um, of course.
It, either way is fine with me, um, how many, uh, employ, oh, sorry, Ms. Hernandez, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna say, yes, I will be working here full-time.
Okay, and how many employees do you plan to have, Ms. Hernandez?
I have four rooms, so I intend to have at least three employees more, as dependent contractors, yes.
And I apologize if you already shared this, but what, what are your planned hours?
Uh, my planned hours are Monday through Friday, from, uh, ten AM to seven PM. Saturday and Sunday from ten to five PM.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions from the board? We have what we need, we will take this under advisement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, thank you all.
All right, next, next up is calendar number three seventy-eight dash twenty-two dash S. This is seventeen twenty, West Belmont.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, my name is Tom Moore. And we, uh, should have three witnesses, Mr. Comden, his life and, uh, business partner Jing and, uh, Mr. Joe Ryan.
Okay, and if there are any, uh, supporters or objectors, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Can see we've got Joe Ryan, I can see we have Richard.
Yeah, and Jing is with me too.
Oh, excellent, excellent, okay, so we've got everyone, um, Richard, w- will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir, my name is Richard Combin, I live at seven 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 North Michigan Avenue. Unit thirty-six hundred, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one one.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, and Jing, could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Jing Huang, uh, I'm living seven 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 North Michigan Avenue. Illinois, uh, Chicago six oh six one one.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, and Joe Ryan has, uh, already been sworn in today and his expertise has been recognized. Let me, uh, read the department's recommendation. So this is the recommendation for calendar number three seventy-eight dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment. Provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Enjoy Spa LLC. And the establishment maintains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade, which shall not be painted over, darkened, or obstructed in any way, so that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street. And let me just take a quick look here. We do not have, uh, any objectors, Counselor Moore, so you, um, are encouraged to do the short form, please.
Yes, yes, sir, um, so, Richard, um, you are a, uh, lifelong businessman, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Moore.
And you've run a variety of businesses and, um, you own the, uh, ground floor um, condo at this location, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And so, um, your life partner, um, is Jing and, uh, she's been working for other people as a licensed massage therapist, and so you thought you could use this, uh, commercial condo uh, to help her open her own business, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And you would be the businessman and she would, she's the practitioner.
Yes, sir.
And, and, um, you, uh, asked all of the other condo owners, there's three other condo owners, and they all signed off on it.
That's correct.
And you've, uh, talked to other neighbors, uh, had an open house or, or approached them in some way and you're aware of no objections, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where we addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this special use uh, if they see fit, and if you continue to testify, testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, and, uh, Jing, will you tell the board how long have you been a licensed, uh?
Yeah, I have the license over ten years.
Okay, and you've been working for other people, is that right?
Yes.
And so when Richard said that he'd be willing to support your own business, you were, you, uh, took him up on it and that's what the application is about here, is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, will you tell the board what your hours would be?
Ten to eight thirty.
Okay, and that'd be daily?
Sunday to, uh, Sunday to Monday, Monday to Sunday, seven days only.
Okay, and, um, you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this special use, and if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with it, is that right?
Right.
Okay, and Joe Ryan, uh, at my request, you, uh, did a report and a study on whether or not this property, this use at this property would have a negative effect on the surrounding property values, is that right?
Yes.
No, she's, he's asking Joe.
Joseph M. Ryan, M.A.I., President of Sale Appraisal Group, offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Wayne, and yes.
And, uh, you also a- addressed each of the other criteria necessary for the board to grant this story, this special use, and if and, uh, you would continue to testify consistently with your report, uh, were you so asked, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's our, uh, case in chief, a- all three people are available for questions.
Any questions from the board? We have what we need, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is calendar number three seventy-nine dash twenty-two dash S. This is sixty-six seventeen South Ashland.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I should address you from the beginning here, um. This is the, this is a, uh, a great proposal, it's a, um, a building that looks just like, uh, a, a terrible eyesore, and, uh, Mr. Lorimer is is spending a million dollars to, uh, return it to its nineteen twenty-two hundred-year-old glory. And he's gonna, he's gonna have ten apartments that are, um, for fifty-five and older C.H.A. apartments. Uh, state-of-the-art apartments, um, and we from day one have been, uh, trying to get in to see the Alderman but, uh, she, uh, is very busy and right now in budget, so I, um, got a call, um, well, I was uh, told, um, uh, by Nancy actually that, uh, the Alderman, uh, was going to object. It, uh, and, uh, because she hasn't, we haven't sat down with her, and so I said immediately and I was finally able to talk to someone in the Alderman's office and promised that I would ask for a continuance for the specific purpose of, uh, sitting down with the Alderman, although we have been trying to do that. So I'm sorry, I didn't know until two o'clock this afternoon that I needed to ask for an order, uh, a continuance, or I would have asked for it this morning.
Sure, so, all right, so you wanna, uh, continuance?
Yeah, of course, my client, uh, is anxious to get going and would like a month, but, um, you know, I understand the board.
Yeah, uh, we can do, uh, December, uh, December sixteen.
Very well, that, that, we would appreciate that.
Okay, so, um, for the record, three seventy-nine dash twenty-two dash S is being continued to December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, now we are moving to calendar numbers three eighty dash twenty-two dash Z and three eighty-one dash twenty-two dash Z.
Mr. Chairman, we should have Mike and Rebecca Semenek, who should be on the same, probably on the same, uh, call, and then we have uh, Michael Ryan.
Okay, and if there are any, uh, uh, supporters or objectors, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. I can see we've had, uh, Taylor Ness on as well. Um, let me get, uh, Michael and Rebecca, uh, sworn in, and along with Mike Ryan. Michael, uh, Simon, can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Michael Semenek, twenty-six eighty-three North Burling, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one one.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Rebecca, could you state your name and address, please?
Yep, hi Brian, um, this is Rebecca Semenek, I'm also at twenty-six eighty-three North Burling.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, absolutely.
Thank you. And, uh, Mike Ryan, can you state your name and address, please?
Mike Ryan, eighteen fifty-nine North Elston in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I affirm.
Okay, now let me see here. Do we have any objectors? We do not. Um, so, uh, Counselor Moore, you are free to do the short form and then we'll open it up, uh, for board questions.
Thank you, and I, I should say that, um, uh, I'm informed that the, uh, uh, new Alderman of the forty-third ward, uh, has given a letter of, I don't know if it's supported or non-objection and the community group, uh, that we saw, uh, the local community group is also not objecting.
You know, you, you, you raise a good, uh, a, a good point, uh, I'm, I'm glad that you, um, I, I, I mentioned Taylor when I, when I saw him and then, uh, I forgot to ask, uh, uh, him if he wants to speak now or speak at the end, it's, it's your call.
I'll speak now and I'll be short and to the point, it's been a long day for everyone. Um, again, my name is Taylor Ness, the chief, uh, Director of Zoning and Urban Development in the forty-third ward. I have been in communication with, um, with, uh, Tom about this project, and I've also heard from Michael and Rebecca. We have received letters of support from the adjacent neighbor to the south and the Neighborhood Association, Park West. Um, I also submitted written letter of no objection, I also must admit that I only referred to item three eighty twenty dash twenty-two dash Z in my letter, I will amend and submit a new one to indicate that our review did extend to three eighty-one dash twenty-two dash Z as well, and we have no objection to either.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, with that, uh, Counselor Moore, um, you can, uh, do the short form and we'll open it up for board questions.
Thank you very much, um, Rebecca, um, you and your hus- you and your husband bought this house, uh, when?
Uh, August twenty-twenty-one.
And it had, the owners before you had converted it from a three-flat to a single-family, is that right?
Yep, that's correct.
But there's a huge, and we have pictures of it, I don't know if, if, uh, Jeanette can find them, but, but they were our hearing exhibits. There's a huge three-story steel, um, obstruction, uh, stairway that takes up a good part of the yard and uh, that your father-in-law br- bangs his head on and, and is, and also takes away a lot of the light and air in your apartment, is that right?
Yep, that's correct.
And, and so that's why, uh, you wanna get rid of that and use the existing stair system um, uh, with your, uh, that comes down from your garage roof deck now. Um, instead of having two stair systems, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, we currently have two backyard staircases and feel like we can probably use one.
And, uh, not only are you for it, but your next-door neighbor, you're on a corner, so you only have one real neighbor and they were very happy about getting more light and air in their apartment as well, is that right? Or their house as well.
Yeah.
And one of our exhibits is there written, um, support and not only for themselves, but of, not only for you, but for themselves, is that right?
Yep, of course, yeah, and on the screen here, you can see on the right-hand side, our next-door neighbors is the brick house too, so this giant commercial-grade staircase, um, with taken down, it would give them a lot of natural light too, and in, you know, single-family houses in Chicago, you welcome any chance you can get to get a little bit more natural light, so they're very supportive of this.
Okay, so, uh, you and I worked out an affidavit where, where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this, these variances if, uh, they saw fit, and if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much, and you're available for questions. Uh, Mike Ryan, um, you're the architect on this case?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
The, uh, Semenex came to you and asked, is there some way they could get rid of this staircase that takes up uh, a portion of their backyard, and, uh, you designed, uh, this solution a portion of their backyard, and you designed this solution that uses the existing compliant staircase on the garage roof deck, is that right?
That's correct.
And that'll create a lot more yard and open space for them, and it still, it will be compliant in every other way with the codes, ordinances, and regulations of the city of Chicago, is that right?
That's correct, it will serve as a second means of egress from the third floor of the existing residence.
And that's why we do need, we do need a route from that, but not, not this big staircase is, is the object of this, this project, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this, and if you continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
And you're available for questions, any board members, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief, and all these three people are available for questions.
All right, thank you, and maybe this question is for, for Mike Ryan, could you just get into a little bit about what the hardship is here?
Well, the hardship is that the existing stair takes up a very large portion of the open space in their rear yard, and as they mentioned, has been a problem, a hazard for, for family members and guests that have hit their head against it, so, you know, in my, my professional opinion, it was a poorly-designed staircase in the first place.
But it was also, it was for a three-flat, which someone else did, and the use of the, of the, of the property is now a single-family, so that, that changed the fact that there's a, a commercial-grade staircase to serve a three-flat and is no longer necessary would create a hardship as well, is that your opinion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I'll add, too, the previous owner for our home was a flipper, so they purchased the home and renovated it from a three-flat into a single-family home, and I think when they saw this large, commercial-grade steel staircase in the backyard, well, there's two of them, but if they, they saw the one that we're talking about and thought, you know, that's probably going to be a lot of extra money to take it down, and of course, we're going to have to go through the process that we're going through right now of, you know, having the, having the zoning discussion, so they probably said, you know what, I'm just going to leave it and like, let the next people deal with it as we convert this from a three-flat, so as the owners who plan on being here for decades to come and growing a family here, we'd love to be able to kind of finally get rid of the last vestige of that three-flat and make it a true single-family home, and I, I don't think that you would design a single-family home with two staircases in the back, usually one is, you know, pretty sufficient, so that's what we're looking to accomplish, is just really make this our family home, rather than kind of just like half three-flat, half-single-family home, and like, make the, make the full conversion. And as you can see, too, regarding hardship on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see that landing is like right around like five-seven, five-eight off the ground, you can see it's eye level with the gentleman in the picture, which was unintentional, but I think it's a great example of how it's pretty common for anyone a little taller than five-six to smack their head on it.
It hits right here.
He's got a couple, a couple bruises on his head from it, too, as does my elderly father-in-law, who spends a lot of time at our house as well.
And Commissioner, to circle back to your direct question, the hardship, it is a substandard lot depth, so getting the rear yard open space is an extra challenge on this property.
Thank you, and any other questions from the board? All right, we have what we need, we will take this one under advisement, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time, and thank you for all that you're doing to keep our city organized and powering into, what, hour eleven or twelve right now that you're on? Us citizens of Chicago appreciate all the work you're doing tonight, and
Sometimes it's a marathon.
It seems like, it seems like, and I wish I could send you all a beer or something.
I appreciate the thought, no, but there's
But as your, as your lawyer, I'll say you can't do that.
Yes, exactly. Okay, all right, thank you very much, moving on. Next up is calendar number three eighty-two dash twenty-two dash S.
Yes, so Mr. Chairman, we should
Fifty West Dickens.
We listed four witnesses here, if there's no objectors, two of them are, just in case there's questions, the architect and the partner, but Alan is the, the primary witness, and and Joe Ryan, oh no, I'm, yeah, and, no, I'm sorry, and Joe Ryan would be the two witnesses.
Okay, and if there are any supporters or objectors, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. All right, I'll swear in Alan, Alan, could you state your name and address, please?
I'll balance here.
He might be connecting right now, let's see here.
I've talked to him several times today, I know he was anxious, Alan Carabbar.
I saw, I saw him, but he he disappeared.
This is Bill Colcalius, I don't think I'm on this case.
No, you're on the next case, Bill.
Yeah, so I'm just going to mute myself and stay silent.
Could we?
He is back, Alan Carabbar.
Alan is here now?
Yeah, yeah, he's muted right now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Please excuse my, my mobile office, I'm sorry, I had to deal with family.
No, that's, that's fine, if you need to, to keep your video off, so it doesn't cause, you know, if you're not on Wi-Fi, the video is going to just make you, you're going to break up, so I would maybe shut the, the video off. But could you state your name and address, please?
Alan Carabbar, fifty-three thirty-three North Lakewood in Chicago, six oh six four zero.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, oh, and this is a second. Okay, oh, never mind.
And then we, you, Joe Ryan has already sworn, so Mr. Chairman, did you want, is there a letter that you?
Yeah, there is, there is, yes, Joe Ryan has sworn, and his expertise has been recognized. I'm sorry, Tom, it's getting late in the day, and I'm getting weary. Here we go. All right, this is for calendar number three eighty-two dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor to allow for rehabilitation of of existing two-story building containing four commercial units and ten dwelling units, or on the ground floor.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the one we passed, that's sixty-seven seventeen Ashland. This is on Dickens, nineteen forty-eight. I'm sorry, I mean, we continued that one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
It looks like that was a copy and paste error on our part.
I see. Okay. So wait a second. So three. So do we have a recommendation for three, wait, we passed?
Three, three seventy-nine was sixty-six seventeen South Ashland, which is what you were just reading, at least that's what you were describing.
I think, right, the descriptive part was copied and pasted, so, so if we not have a letter, chairman would allow me, I can just read the actual real description with the rest of the recommendation.
Yes, go ahead and read the recommendation for three eighty-two dash twenty-two dash S.
Okay, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, five-dwelling unit building, provided get caught up here, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, prepared by P.M.P.C. Architects.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Sorry for the confusion.
Oh, no worries, no worries. And we do not have any objectors on this one. Counselor Moore, so you can go to the, use the short form, and we will then go to board questions.
Thank you very much. Alan, you're a developer who has appeared in front of this board many times before, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And this property is on a residential street, however, it's marked B because it's several doors east of the Damon Corridor, but it's separated by other residential properties, and the whole nature of the block is residential, is that right?
That's correct.
And that's why you decided that it would be foolish to put a, a commercial building on this residential street, and one of our hearing exhibits is ten empty stores in the near area, so that added to your sense that that would be foolish, is that right?
That's correct, a commercial would be out of character for this block.
Okay, and the building you're going to build is much more conforming than what was previously there, or is there now, is that right?
Correct, there are two buildings there now, one of which is all the way the back of the lots, it would not be conforming to today's zoning code.
Okay, and Nancy just testified, in the recent time you have made changes suggested by the plan department, and and they're reflected in the plans that she alluded to, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And you and I went through all of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variant, this special use, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's correct.
Mr. Ryan, at my request, you did a study and a report about whether or not this, the granting of a special use at this location would have a negative effect on the surrounding property values, is that right?
It's correct.
And your conclusion was that it would not, and that it meets all the other criteria necessary for the board to grant a special use at this location, is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your report, is that right?
Correct, for the record, Joseph Ryan, LaSalle Appraisal Group, ninety-four fifty-five South Wayne Avenue in Chicago.
And Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief.
Thank you very much, any questions from the board?
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I need to amend that recommendation, it wasn't P.M.P.C. Architects, it was Craft Architecture.
Okay.
The date was correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Dasi from Craft is here, I believe, but only in case you needed to have questions.
Okay, all right, thank you, any, any questions from the board? All right, we have what we need, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Now, now, Tom, are you in agreement that we should take three eighty-three, three eighty-four, and three eighty-five and three eighty-six together?
Absolutely, they're really, they're really one phase of a larger project.
Okay, great, then we are calling calendar numbers three eighty-three dash twenty-two dash Z, three eighty-four dash twenty-two dash Z, three eighty-five dash twenty-two dash Z, and three eighty-six dash twenty-two dash Z. This is for sixteen oh five to oh seven North Normandy, sixty-six fifty to fifty-two West North Avenue, and sixteen oh four to oh six North Natoma Avenue, and sixty-six thirty-eight to forty West North Avenue, and there is a a typo on the agenda that I just want to correct, it's with regard to three eighty-four dash twenty-two dash Z, it indicates sixteen oh six to oh seven North Normandy, but it's sixteen oh five to oh seven North Normandy.
That's right, because that would be the odd, odd side of the street.
Correct, correct, so the, the, the agenda is is, is being amended on the record now.
So, Mr. Chairman, there was a Judith from the community, not-for-profit community organization that did a study about how to improve the business corridor from Austin to Harlem, I think she had other, she was, she was here most of the day, but I think she had other obligations tonight, but she did, we did have her affidavit and her not-for-profits study, which we did file with our findings of fact. And then the other two witnesses are Victor, who is the developer and builder, and his architect, Bill Colley.
Okay, and if, if you are here in support or objection, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. Okay, so we've got, your, your witnesses are Victor?
And Bill.
And Bill, okay, Victor, could you state your name and address, please?
Victor Yakovievich, fourteen hundred Park Avenue, River Forest, Illinois, six oh three oh five.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, and Bill Colcalius, have we sworn you in already today?
Yes, you have.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, all right, let's see here, do we have any objectors? No objectors have raised their hand, so you can proceed with the short form, and we'll open it up for board questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so Victor, this is really the second phase of a three-part project, is that right?
Correct.
And you, we've appeared in front of this board on at least three separate occasions, on kind of the first phase and, and allowing the, the, that phase to work, is that right?
Correct.
So, so this was the old, the whole block to the west is the old St. Paul Federal Building, and what we've done after community support, the alderman's support, and many meetings, you've converted, that's going to be, on the ground floor, it's going to be the community library, right now, the library is in a room at Sarah's Park, it was closed many years ago, and the you're going to have forty-three units there in the old bank, we, this board granted us a variance, a couple of variances to allow that, and that building's almost done, is that right?
Forty-two actual residential units, and Chicago Public Library, that is correct.
Okay, and then to make that work, we got a special use to put the parking for that, there was no place on that site to put parking, so we got a special use from this board to put the parking on, on another parking lot from the old bank that was on Oak Park Avenue, is that right?
Correct.
It'll park in north, so it's within the six hundred feet to the west, is that right?
Yeah.
And so, but the plan is and has always And so, but the plan is and has always been so that maybe at some point we can develop that lot, which is on Oak Park Avenue, which is a nice cross-street and might be able to accommodate an, an, a different kind of building or we'll see. But the plan has always been to have extra parking on the, the property that's in front of the board today. In addition to having additional apartments in this lot, which is the entire lot to the east, which used to be the, the bank's employee parking lot. Is that right?
That is correct.
So that, we went through many machinations of that building, but it was, this plan was a type-one plan passed in front of the city council. And what you've done is put one building facing Natoma and one building facing Normandy. And with parking on the full ground floor, that'll have an extra, there's fifty-nine units. And there will be an extra thirty-one parking spaces in the two buildings. And the whole, the whole for plan, we're not resuming it, but is to come back and possibly at a later time, move the parking to free up the building on Oak Park. So this building has one unit, one parking space for each unit, but it also has extra parking in case we're able to do that in the future. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and so in order to make this work, there's about thirty-four, the two buildings, their backs face each other, which creates an open space between them at the second floor level. And there's about thirty-four feet instead of thirty feet. And that's the one variance and the other variance is asking for a, to waive the, the loading, loading zone. Although you have divi- designed into it a ample space right near the elevator that would accommodate the kind of trucks that would be moving household furniture. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and you and I went through a affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant these variances. And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with that. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and Bill, you've been the architect on this project in all its phases. Is that right?
Yeah, it's been about three or four years, I think, yes.
Okay, and so you were in attendance at the community meetings and you've made many different designs as you went and as we accommodated the concerns. And the resulting buildings will comply if the board sees fit to grant these variances. It'll comply with all codes and regulations and ordinances of the city. Is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with the affidavit that we filed as a part of our findings of fact and that you signed and we filed. Is that right?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's the essence of it. The, these witnesses are available for questions.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board? We have what we need. We're going to take this under advisement.
Thank you very much. And thanks for your patience and, and all that you do and spending the whole day doing this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are, we're getting close. We're on, we're at the home stretch now. But the, it's been a few, it's been maybe several hours before the board has had a break. So we are going to take a short break. We're going to break until eight-ten. So I, I move that we recess until eight-ten. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya? You're, you're muted, Sam.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time with my stuff today here. Really bad. Sorry.
That's all right. So what, what's, what's, what's your vote, Sam, on a recess at ten?
I'm fine. Go, let's do it.
Okay, yes, I.
How long are we doing it for?
Until eight-ten. We're going to recess until eight-ten and then, and then we should be able to, to close out.
Sorry.
All right, so we are in recess until eight-ten.